Council meeting in order, please call the roll.
Bergeron.
President.
Coos.
Here.
Harris.
Good.
Carlson.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Seivertson.
Here.
West.
Here.
Will you please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Let's see what we got under communication. We do have a request from management to move the executive session after item A1. He wants us to be awake when we talk about that one, so I'm going to make sure we call that right after A1. We also had something on here on the Congress National Conservation Strategy Summit invitation. I'll talk about that under person company where we talk and give our comments. Bring us down to persons to be heard, and let's start off with Mr. Branko.
Good evening, council members, mayor. My name is Patrick Branko, I live at 218 Raspberry Lane, and I am also the CEO of Ketchikan Medical Center. And I just wanted to speak briefly to agenda, new business agenda items 11 and 12, and to publicly thank the city council for the work on behalf of the Your Health, Your Future project that we've been collaborating on now over several years. And the success of having the governor sign the $15 million capital appropriation is quite a coup for the community. And I especially want to call out council member Olson, Seivertson, Mayor Williams, and Mr. Coos as well, for the considerable effort in the legislative process. And I just wanted to express that it's my genuine honor to partner with the city. And the city manager Carl has been an extraordinary agent on behalf of this community, and I think it's a real privilege.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ah.
Dr. Rice, Peter.
My name is Peter Rice, I live at 1395 Pond Reef Road. And I'm a internal medicine doctor and also the medical director of the Peace Health Medical Group, which comprises about 23 providers. I just wanted to echo Mr. Branko's comments and, once again, express my appreciation for all the effort that the city is doing to upgrade the facility. And again, affirm how important it is for us as providers to upgrade the surgical suites as well as the other infrastructure, including the clinic spaces. I recently, earlier this week, was down at a similar facility in Florence, Oregon, a critical access hospital which is also Peace Health and is a partnership between the city and the Peace Health. And seeing their facility sort of underscored the distance we have to go. But we're very excited about the bond issue again. Express my appreciation, and certainly is going to be a big thing for both retention of our providers and recruitment of providers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Johnson, Dave.
David Johnson, I live at 196 Heckman. I'm going to talk just very quickly about history. Today's sort of a historic day. June 6th, 69 years ago was D-Day. 19 years after that, in 1963, we dedicated the hospital, the new hospital. We're still using two of those three operating rooms that I first worked in in July of 1970, 43 years ago. And a lot of things have changed in medicine since 43 years ago. We desperately need to have a new facility. And I reiterate what others have said in terms of the partnership between the city and the hospital. Without that partnership, we couldn't have anything resembling the facilities that we have available for the folks in Ketchikan. But respectfully request that you deal favorably with the bond issue and proceed forward with all the efforts that many, many of you have spent many hours working on. Greatly appreciate that. I look forward to having groundbreaking on the new facility before October 13th, 19, or 2013, because that would be the 50th birthday of the existing surgical suite. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now brings us down to Lori Luck.
My name is Lori Luck. I live at 108 Hockberry Circle. And I've been a Ketchikan resident for the past 18 years. Let the record show that I am 72 years old. I come before you as a former secondary school teacher and an interested citizen. Interested in who really gives a damn about the less than stellar youth of our community. I have nothing but admiration for Jack Duckworth and his efforts to take the fights and brawls out of the parking lot at Walmart, off the public sidewalks in front of our boppers, and bring them into a supervised venue of the Fight Club's Fight Night. For us, Fight Night is a family affair. We mark it on our calendars way ahead, so everybody knows it's a family. We go out to dinner at the cake box, and then across the way to the fight. Not because we love, quote, "blood and guts and still beer," as one of the people on either side. No, we go to the fights to show Jack that we support him in his efforts to provide a supervised venue for these young adults. Because frankly, we don't see anyone else stepping up to the plate. As for the use of the Ted Perry Civic Center, well, what does the word civic mean? If you wish to make the center's use open for only a certain strata of Ketchikan's population, then please remove the word civic from the building's name and specify which strata of Ketchikan is welcome to use the facility. If this is indeed a civic center, then I suggest you figure out a way to accommodate all strata of Ketchikan's population, and that includes the less than stellar. Jack has indicated a willingness to address the issues brought forth. Unfortunately, Jack was out of town when these latest issues burst circles. Might it prove beneficial to bring up these or any other issues when both parties are in town? Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Is Mr. Duckworth out of town now?
No, he's here. That was the last.
So we did put it off so he would be here?
Yeah, we deferred it.
Okay.
We got him here.
Okay.
We're not going to let him get away. Linda Auger, come on down. Thank you, Linda. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Linda Coons Auger, I reside at 841 Frost Avenue. And tonight I represent the Alaska Small Business Development Center. I have just handed out our new resource booklet, which is available at our office in the White Cliff Building on the second floor. We also have a display, so it is available in a common area at White Cliff as well. Tonight I'm here to address any questions that you may have on our quarterly report that is in your packet this evening. And I wanted to share with you that we continue to be busy in the center. We have many new clients as well as long-term clients that we are advising at this time. And one of the highlights that I would like to share with you from last quarter is that I was honored to be able to and be invited to conduct a small business class under the Ketchikan Area Arts and Humanities Council March Artist Development Workshop Series. And that was an example of us going out and working with other organizations to reach some of their membership. And I continue to be available to do that with other organizations and continue to advise business owners, entrepreneurs, and startups. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Linda tonight? No, thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your continued support.
That brings us to Joel Jackson.
Good evening, council members, Joel Jackson, 127 Martin Buggy. I'm here on behalf of Gateway Center for Human Services Akila to answer any questions you might have for me regarding new business item number three. I'll stay in the audience until you guys get to that item and let me know if you have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. That brings us to Steve, come on down.
Good evening, Steve Cook, on 2281 Oyster Avenue. You're representing the Ketchikan Lions, I'm the current president of the Ketchikan Lions. Item 7A15 is a request for 3,000 towards the fireworks. The Ketchikan Lions is who purchases and sets up and shoots the fireworks for 4th of July. It's not the Chamber of Commerce, it's not the city, it's not the borough, it's not anybody else. Our club has done it for years and years. The Borough chips in, Char chips in, Southeast Stevedore donates the barge, we do fundraising and that. But ever since we gave up marshaling the 4th of July booths down here on the Tonga stock, we've been coming up like 2,000 or 3,000 short. We could do more raffle sales and stuff like that, but the community has already raffled out with the kids. I don't want to take away anything from the kids. So your 2,000 or 3,000, which you've been donating the last couple of years, has met that little funding gap, because it's 13,000 to purchase that 20-minute worth of show. And since we shoot it ourselves, we don't have to pay anybody 10,000 or 15,000 or 20,000 to shoot it for us like most communities do. So it's a good bang for the buck, sorry for the pun. But that's why we're here tonight asking for that, a little bit to just meet the little funding gap we have for that 13,000 to top it off.
You've got some.
Just in case it rains on the 4th of July, Steve. Sometimes it'll take a long, long time for the fireworks to go off, and maybe this one's predicted too. Has anybody thought of an auxiliary date if the 4th doesn't work out? Is it going to be a week later or?
What they, because it takes all day to set up. They make, they try to make the call early, whether or not they think there's going to be a shot at it or not. And then, if for some reason the weather, we make the decision to set up and we think we're going to shoot, and then the weather turns and we can't shoot, we basically only have a day or so on the Coast Guard permit. And also on our, you know, our personal timeline, we can't just leave it set up on the barge for several days or a week. So we basically have a two-day window. And then if, and if we don't set up or have to tear it all down, then that's when we look, maybe we'll do it on New Year's. But then we were competing against Kenny Riola for a couple of years, but now he's kind of backed off a little bit.
Well, we can just send you up on topic here.
So it's, it's a tough decision, and we just pray for good weather. We really do, makes it so much easier.
And I want to thank you for the personal fireworks show that you put on every 4th of July from my house.
The, I will tell you, we have people saying, can you start a little bit earlier? But I'm down there every year, and it's like, not really. It's just not dark enough until 11 o'clock on the 4th of July. You know, maybe about 10 minutes till, but it's almost dark enough, but it's, that's about it. It's that time of year, you're right after the solstice.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right, that brings us down to Trey.
Hi, Trey Akerston, CEO of SEPA, 10709 Gina Road. Passing around a little handout, some of you may have already seen it before. It's just a summary of the services that SEPA provides. And I thought it might be an handy reference card for people that may not be familiar with all the things that we're doing in our organization. Today I'm here to address specifically Mr. Amalon's letter under 7B1. I guess I was disappointed with the flavor of the letter. I spent several hours today drafting a detailed rebuttal. But I can see you guys are filled up tonight and have a lot going on. Perhaps it may be more appropriate to meet personally with the mayor and discuss that. There's a lot of misinformation provided, a lot of negative terms, a lot of negative connotation towards SEPA. I don't think this is what the mayor wants as far as a relationship to move this process forward. And it certainly isn't a good foundation for talks with regard to the true-up agreement. So I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to Jack Duckworth.
How's it going?
Good.
How much time do I give?
All day, Jack. I brought a book. Holy cow, are you going through this whole thing, Jack?
Uh, sort of.
Where's the bridge? I don't see, I don't see the bridge thing in here.
Thank you, sir.
Forty pages.
Is this the same information that was emailed?
Uh, some, if everybody got that email, then I can kind of go through it pretty quick. You know, basically, you know, I don't, I'll just skim this really quick, because I know it's a lot of information. When I started putting together, I thought it was going to be a page or two, but it turned out to be quite a bit more. You know, we've been doing the Fight Club here in Ketchikan since June 1st, 2002. So we've been in existence for about 11 years. We are a nonprofit, we're a nonprofit with IRS and with the state of Alaska. And we've had 32 competitions to date, and we've had over 15,000 spectators. If you flip back, because I can kind of walk you through this a little bit quicker, and go to the revenue page, it's on page four. You know, we actually generate a lot of income. It's not our money, you know, we're a nonprofit, but it's the, it's basically the fans are paying it. We just kind of redistribute it, you know. But over that 11 years, we have did a lot of good for the economy and things. We've, we've paid out over 320,000, you know, for expenses to southeast vendors. We've paid over 200,000, well, I guess that's the southeast, and over 320 overall. But to the borough, we've paid over $50,000 over those 32 shows. And we've paid 140 local vendors, like Joe's T-Shirt Shop and those kind of things. You know, for competitor earnings, we paid 110,000 out, and we did local sponsorships for about $3,500. And like I said, it's really not our money. It's just that what we can distribute and we can kind of regenerate, you know, kind of put that back in the economy. But we truly are a nonprofit, and we truly do a whole lot of good. And if you kind of go over to the salaries and assistance, that just kind of shows you what we've paid out to the police department, what we've paid out to people that are participating in fitness events. You know, we've paid out over $4,300 to support other athletes and their venues. We've paid out over 110 for competitors' compensation, $110,000. Paid over $64,000 to, you know, for fees for security and ushers. You know, so we really do put a lot of money back in the economy. And then the next two pages is the average cost per show. And if you flip to page seven, it just kind of shows you, you know, we really think we're a good club. And sometimes we get a bad rap, people go in there and they say, oh, they got about 300, 400 people, they're making 35, 40 bucks a head. You know, what are they doing with all that money? Well, to put on one of those shows, depending on how many people we fly into town and, you know, and those kind of expenses, it can range anywhere from 12,000 to 14,000 dollars to put on one of those shows. They're, they're really costly, they're really expensive. And everybody besides the promoters, you know, need money to, you know, to donate their time. So anyway, that just kind of gives you an average cost of what things cost us too. It's, you know, it's not a cheap ordeal, but it, but it kind of puts a lot of money back in, and you can kind of see that total cost. The insurance is the next page, real quick. You know, we carry really good insurance, it's actually not all that expensive. You know, it's about $600, but it really does have some really good insurance and some liability. Statistics, you know, on page nine, that kind of speaks for itself. We've had the 32 shows, we've had over 736 matches, we've had over 1,400 participants, we've had over 15,000 spectators. And altercations in the crowd, we've had seven. There's an appendix in the back that talks about what those altercations were, how those were resolved. We actually resolve those pretty quick. It's a push, or it's a hair pull, and it's broke up. So, you know, seven altercations over amongst 15,000 people in 32 shows. That's actually remarkable to a big degree. It also explains our security systems, how many head of securities we have. We have about eight of us that roam, that work, that make all the bigger decisions. We have ushers that keep the doorways clear, they also help keep the debris picked up. But it's actually a pretty big team of people. I don't know, how many of you, KG, I know you've been to the fights. You, you know kind of what I'm talking about as far as, there's a lot of people there doing a lot of stuff. You know, one of the questions that was asked me are on page, the next page, the compliance with conditions of the rental agreement. I can tell you across the board, we've complied with all of our conditions. The only exception to that is that we have everything turned in two weeks before the actual competition. Sometimes that gets to be really difficult, because we're not in control of, you know, putting in the liquor permits and those kind of things. But even now that they've kind of understand more how it works, they've been doing a better job with that too. But it's all done before show, and with the admissions of how many tickets we can sell, we've complied with that 100%. With the sales of alcohol, you know, contracting to an outside vendor, we've done that, we've done that 100%. Police presence, the police are really good about supporting us and making sure we have our officers, we've complied with that 100%. The emergency medical technicians, we've got a married couple that show up and they've been doing that, we've complied with that 100%. And they're awesome. Participants with the age requirements, we've complied with that 100%. The Fight Club employees, we've turned those in and complied with that. Insurance and permit, 100% compliance. Protective gear was a requirement if the insurance required, they don't, so we've complied. Green card girls was whatever we wanted to do. They're the ones that kind of got a lot of this started, but, but anyway, there's, they're not. Tarp's, we did replace the tarp's, and at the time when that was a request. The facility checkoff list, that was something that was implemented. The Ted Perry Civic Center put together a really nice checkoff list, it was super thorough, super detailed. It, you know, it was implemented for two to three shows, and it's, I think at this point in time, it can't be located. We love that checkoff list, it's real detailed, and it's also documentation that we're leaving the building in good shape. But that's, no one can seem to locate that, so, you know, that's not been complied with. But we would like to work with Rhonda and have them reinstitute that, because we think that's actually a good thing. And then the next page is the response to the new concerns. You know, having the tarp's, you know, there was complaints that it was musty, and it was, it smelled musty, it aired out after a couple of hours. But, you know, instead of paying the 5,000 to 10,000 for new tarp's, I've talked with Rhonda, you know, that we could actually just put new tarp's in each and every show, and they're about $250, $300. So we, you know, we've met with Rhonda, we've met twice now, we've talked twice. And we kind of went through each one of these conditions, and I think we've come up with some pretty good solutions. You know, one of the ones about the bathroom, the concerns for the bathroom, the removal of the chairs. You know, we have staff that sit outside the bathrooms, the bathrooms are big. We think we just move the staff inside the bathrooms, that way it's more monitored, more detailed, and we'll just rotate them more often. We also, removal of the chairs. I have 30 usher, security guards there at the end of the show, and we can break, I mean, it's, it's a work of art if you've never seen it. But I could put four on pulling out chairs that need to be cleaned, and the rest of them stack in the chairs within event staff, and we could roll through that. So we still actually want to put up the chairs, you know, because we can, we can do it pretty fast, pretty efficient with 30 people. We usually do the breakdown for about a two-hour period, so that's 60 hours of labor, man force that's, you know, putting up, cleaning up. Removing the garbage, I've talked to Rhonda about that, that was actually, we kind of, kind of looked at that and kind of worked that out. We actually do take all the garbage out of the building. This was about the garbage and the dumpsters. What we were actually asking was clarification on how many dumpsters and what's the price per dumpster, so we would know what to expect on a charge. And me and Rhonda's kind of worked that out, and actually, it kind of came out in our favor. That's kind of good. You know, on the fourth, you know, minimum of $95 charge for cleanup of beer, blood, for sure. We think with the new tarp's, we can target just a little bit bigger area. But we're okay actually with that charge. You know, we would like to work with Rhonda on trying to get that kind of settled out a little bit more to where we can make sure we get that better cleaned and better tarp. Pay for six additional hours for the Civic Center staff. And I would think that would be totally fair if they were putting up the chairs, but we still want to put up the chairs. I've talked with Rhonda about how we could do that. The policy that we put together kind of sounds good. And we would actually still be doing all that, so we'd break it down, so that way the event staff wouldn't be stuck with putting up 500 chairs. We would still be able to do that until a relatively quick period of time and to make sure the chairs were clean. Some other things, the security guards being, you know, screened through the police department. We do turn in a list of the security guards, they have screened out one person in 10 shows. We do a 5:00 screening, we've screened, we usually screen two or three per show. One of the things that we did, and if you look at the appendix, we've got forms that are developed, so anyone that's not been pre-screened that are signed up the day of, we could have the officers pre-screen them right then and there. That's one of the things that they do do and bring it to our attention, but it would make it more of an official process, so it could alleviate those concerns. Moving, you know, our security inside the bathrooms, bathrooms are big enough that we could actually do that relatively easy and make that work better. We hope you guys support this. You know, I, Mrs. Luck is probably one of our best fight fans, she's, she's been there all the time. We go up to Juno and fight, and she's been up to Juno to watch the fights. She also pulls the 50/50 ticket, because she's the only one to trust. And she does a good job with that. But, but it really is a wide variety of people that show up, and, and so I think, because I know this is going to get long, so I'm going to cut this even shorter. If you please go through this form as the one that you have, because it is more detailed. But one of the things that we would, we would like to, on this proactive style of working together, it's at the very back of your book, this is, this is just a different way of looking at how we work together. of looking at how we work together. Instead of everything seeming fine for two, three years and then change with administration staff, uh, different focuses, you know, I run the, uh, residential program here and we constantly get new regulations, so we have to update, we have to relook at. So we would rather, instead of letting it kind of fester for two, three years, is, you know, to meet after each show with the administration and the event staff and do any kind of changing right then and there with new policies, new procedures. So that way we can just kind of keep on top of it so it stays productive. So one of our proposals is that we would like to meet with the city because this is an awful lot and I don't expect you guys to kind of, I know, the last time we, uh, went through some of this, we met with the assistant city manager and kind of met with Rhonda and we kind of looked at the different issues and we kind of came up with solutions. You know, I would suggest that we'd be able to do that again, you know, and then bring this back to the city council for either approval or denial. Uh, it would make it, uh, probably make more sense and we could spend more time kind of hashing out more of the details. But anyway, there's your, there's your pamphlet that really spells everything out that we kind of think that we do and what we do and we do well. So I can entertain questions.
Anybody have any questions for Jack? Yeah, see you then, thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
All right, Kathleen, you're last on the list.
Old boy, pictures.
Pictures. A quick update, uh, I, my name is Kathleen Line, I live at four-ten Cedar Lower, I'm the director of the Arts Council. A quick update, uh, for the Arts Council for the month of May, the exhibit in the Main Street Gallery was You Inspire Me, it was an exhibit by Sandy Shepherd and Becky Hesidol. We had three hundred and thirty-one at the opening and six hundred and fourteen people, uh, throughout the month of May. Um, the last piece of artwork, artwork was installed in the library on the thirty-first, it's Two King Salmon created by Nathan Jackson. I'd like to thank the city manager's office, Linda Leishel at the library and the city public works and maintenance guys for all of their exceptional work, their flexibility and their support, they were extraordinary in getting all of the pieces in the library up, helping at every request, it was, it was exceptional. I would also like, like to thank council member Severson for helping to celebrate, uh, Nathan's piece in such a respectful and honorable way, that was very wonderful, thank you very much. Um, we are beginning the planning for the unveiling of Yeltatsi Salmon created by Terry Piles, that'll be unveiled on July fourth. Uh, we're working with both the chamber and the rotary for that, um, unveiling ceremony and we're hoping there's going to be some really great surprises. Again, many thanks to the city manager's office for the help and support, um, in this planning. Um, we are working on the release of the request for proposals for the next piece of Ketchikan's Public Art, um, uh, collection and that's going to be for the rain gauge right down here, um, and we're going to be releasing that in the next week or so. Booth applications for the Blueberry Arts Festival have been released, um, as have the calls to artists for the Giggle Feet Dance Festival and Battle of the Bands. Um, number five, okay. We have released the order forms for the Blueberry Festival Art T-shirts to our members and they can start ordering those T-shirts right now, um, but for non-members, uh, those will go on sale in July. Once again, I'd like to thank the city's manager's office for help, they've already given us as we plan around the construction equipment set up in the city parking lot across the street, uh, and if you remember, we expanded into that lot last year, so we're doing a little rigmarole getting out of Dawson's way and, and thanks to the manager's office for helping us do that. Um, I'd like to invite you to our next exhibit at the Main Street Gallery, it's called Down to Earth with Figures, this is an exhibit by Jill Mant, she's new to town, about three years she's been here, she works, uh, as a nurse at the hospital. This is a completely different exhibit than we've had in quite some time with just ceramics and ceramics as figures, so it should be quite different and really fun, so I hope you can all make it. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, that's the last one on the list, but is there anybody else who wants to address the council tonight? See you then, we'll move on.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us down to consent agenda, which will be consent as one during, if you guys would turn to seven A three, um, seven A four, and seven A nine. So far those I've, um, if nobody has objection, I'd like to put on the consent agenda.
Your honor.
Yeah.
I wish to discuss, um, seven A four.
We shall pull that off the consent agenda idea. So we got, um, anybody have a problem with three? Three-year lease extension?
I'd just like to ask one question on that when we get to it.
Okay. Um, and then the, um, the budget transfer for the comp plan that we had ordered is number nine. We already approved that, we're just approving the funding.
Mr. Mayor.
I was mistaken in my zeal to discuss that, so please put it back on.
All right, I'll put four back on there.
Your honor, I'd, I'd like to have a, some explanation of three or four.
Okay. Excuse me. We'll bring it up after we put it on the consent. Um, then I have fourteen and fifteen I'd like to put on the consent. The duck vendors are just getting the lease, uh, one was not, um, that, um, one was, um, eliminated, they didn't make the payment, so the ducks are the next one in line. Um, fifteen is the, um, request for the chamber, I mean, the Lions Club. And then on, um, B two, we have the, um, change order number eight, which is number two, and number three, Marion Griffin's, um, resolution, which he isn't here today. So I was just going to throw that out. All right, those are the ones I'm going to have on there, we will ask Dick, we'll ask a question on number four. Madam Clerk, you got them all?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No motion.
We have a motion to consent.
I move the consent.
Move consent, Madam Clerk, can you read that?
Approval of minutes, regular medium of May sixteenth, two thousand thirteen, liquor license transfer of ownership to Gally. Uh, change order number two final for the Bar Harbor Boat Launch Ramp. Change order number one to the library with Dawson. And change order number one to Peace Health with, uh, the Peace Health Medical Center, Ketchikan Medical Center Penthouse Sighting and Flashing Installation Contract, that's a title. Two thousand thirteen Emergency Management Performance Grant Application. Ordinance number thirteen seventeen twenty-nine amending the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Lease of Dock Vending Locations, first reading. Budget Transfer Command Vehicle Number Two Replacement. Vacation of Power Line Easement six nine eight nine South Congress Highway. Change order number one Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities Utility Agreement, North Congress Highway from War Cove to Refuge Cove Payment Rehabilitation Project. Ordinance number thirteen seventeen twenty-seven, a three-year lease extension of real property to Akila Inc., first reading. Uh, number four stayed on there, right? It went to consent?
Yes, it's in consent where we're going to ask you a question.
Contract number thirteen twenty, design of berth three canopies with PND Engineers Inc. Budget Transfer Classification and Compensation Plan Update, Ralph Anderson and Associates. Ordinance number thirteen seventeen twenty-eight, granting of a dock vendor lease on city real property to Alaska Amphibious Tours LLC. Exempting said lease from Ketchikan Municipal Code, authorizing award of such dockly, dock vendor lease to next highest bidder in the event of lease termination, first reading. And, oh, that's not it. Request for three thousand dollars for the Lions Club Fourth of July fireworks display. Contract number zero seven zero four, con, uh, change order number eight to the Whitman Lake Hydroelectric Project Final Design with Hatch Acres Corporation. And finally, resolution number thirteen twenty-five oh nine, recognizing Marion Griffin for her years of service at the City of Ketchikan and Ketchikan Public Utilities Telecommunications Division.
Thank you. Dick, you had a question on number four, contract thirteen?
I've got a question on that, I'd like to make a comment on a couple others too. On number four, uh, okay, canopies, I, I guess I'm trying to figure out, one time I talked with Steve about what was there, but I'm, I'm kind of questioning the amount of money and what PND's going to do, are we going to do wooden structures like the Borough has done, are we looking at something completely different because it seemed like that's a lot of money here? So I just need an explanation of what it is, what our concept is of what we're trying to do.
Joy, hit.
Just making sure you're acknowledging that you want me to talk.
Somebody say something.
Port Harbors Director, Steve Quiprun. Um, the structures will be very similar to the ones that, um, they've designed for Phase Three down in the Front Street Extension. They'll be similar to the Borough Bus, uh, canopy shelters, but twice as long. Um, the engineering that's going to be done, that needs to be done is to, for the foundations for these things. They have to be designed to withstand a hundred and twenty mile an hour, three-second gust. So, um, we're going to, they're going to have to design, uh, some box beams to bridge the caps underneath berth three, and then we bring in the post supports up, they'll be welded to those, up through that, um, utility trench that's in between the Tonga Dock and berth three, you know, where the grates are that we're, we're going to start replacing down there. Um, get what I'm talking about? Okay. Um, and it's, it's the inspection work, they'll have to inspect the stuff, um, when it's fabricated down, uh, the yard, wherever, they get it down in Seattle, where the contractor that gets the bid is selected, um, and then the welding inspections here on site. Um, and the estimate that we, that they gave us over a year ago was, uh, you know, no more than seventeen thousand, so that's what I put in the budget. And their proposal came in at sixteen something.
It just seemed like that design is high and, there's a lot of money and PND has been getting a lot of money out of this city for a long time and it just, but I know the design on the top is already completed, basically from what the Borough has done, it just seemed like a lot of money.
Right. This is for the structural design to, to hold these things up.
Yeah, I, I get it. Should have been an engineer, I guess.
Me too.
All right, any other things?
Oh, yeah, I, a couple of not to Steve though, thanks, Steve. Um, one of the, one of the, let's see, a comment, um, I know we, we instructed the manager to go work with Ralph Anderson and Associates, but, um, at some point in time I wish we were working with another outfit because it just seems like we've dealt with these folks for a long time and I'm not too sure we're totally satisfied. Another comment, it's my standard comment on the emergency grant, federal government's broke and we're asking for money, so I'll keep making that comment. Okay, the other one's a question on, uh, the change order for design of the, I think it's Akilah's thing from Hatch Acres, and I was under the impression we already pretty well had that done when we originally bid it, so I'm, I'm worried about another design cost for Mr. Hatch.
It was not included, Councilmember Coos, we had this discussion during budget deliberations and rather than trying to apply the cost of the design against our construction budget, the council opted to take it out of the Electric Division operating funds. So you included the design in the two thousand thirteen Electric Division budget.
Okay, and, and I guess what's confusing me is we bid this job with Akilah's in it and so that means we did, we bid it before it was designed.
No, you're right, and then we valued engineer to take it out and we're not sure with everything we're doing that we can get it back in just the way it was designed, so that's why Hatch is looking at an alternative configuration.
Redesign and, oh, okay, okay, that, that, thank you, Mayor, that's close.
All right, any other questions? Go ahead.
Can I make a comment about number three?
Which one?
Uh, number three, the thirteen seventeen twenty-seven Akila.
Go ahead.
I just had a concern, I don't know if Mr. Jackson is still here, that, um...
Joey, she's still here.
It, it's come to my attention that we don't have any facility for emergency detox or, uh, services of that type. Um, what I was told was that the car house has been, um, remodified into more of a long-term residential, whereas there used to be a few spots there for emergency detox provisions, now there aren't any beds available for that specifically. There aren't any beds available or any resources available at the hospital for that type of a situation and I'm just kind of concerned that we have this void of services between the two entities where we had it once and now it seems to have been, um, changed. What's your feedback or comment on?
Um, so, uh, Akila, when we, when we came to Gateway and took on the grants, uh, the state did have, uh, monies in there for, um, detox. However, the detox that the state specified is something that could not be supported in the community and the funds that the state budgeted for that, uh, would not pay for the services.
So what do people do?
Um, and, you know, I'm not here to speak on behalf of the hospital, but people do detox at the hospital.
Okay, because I was specifically told hey, aren't available as well.
Yeah, I mean, so, but it's not a planned or coordinated, you know, these are folks who come in, are having other issues or maybe they're just picked up by the police and they will, if it's appropriate, detox them at the hospital. Um, and then also people go to Juneau.
I, I'll give you a personal example because I brought someone to the hospital in a situation that needed detox. I was told in the emergency room that that service wasn't available, so when I asked them about Akila services, they said there wasn't anything available there and they were real sorry, but there wasn't anything they could do to help us. So what does a person in our community do in a situation like that? I mean, it's not like we can get on a plane to Juneau or a plane to Seattle in, in those kind of situations and I just feel like there's a void that we're not addressing. It's like no one wants to talk about it, no one wants to address it, it's, you know, it's their problem, we're their problem. But I think...
I think it's a fair assessment.
Between the two entities or between us as a community somewhere, someone, we need to pick, I, I think where it's a big disservice for our, our community. I, I don't know what the answers are, but there's entities out there that I had thought were available that apparently aren't.
Yeah, and we do have an advisory board that has, uh, not only community members but also, um, clients that give us feedback and, and I know that is a, a concern.
I'd be more happy to, to bring feedback because it would help.
You're more than welcome to attend, um, and so, but there is no easy answer and it, what you describe is accurate. In some cases, you know, we have worked with folks to get them to Juneau, um, in other cases, uh, it is a function of them hitting, you know, whatever bottom is.
Basically, you pretty much just have to be almost like in a medical state of emergency dead, dying close to it before you get anyone's attention and that's a real shame.
Well, detox itself is very, um, dangerous.
Well, I, I understand that and that's why I went to the emergency room.
So it, there is no easy answer, uh, the state has a, a large role to play in that, I'm not putting blame there.
I guess I'm asking, you know, as, as a entity that represents these services in our community, if you would please take this as, um, serious in, in your endeavor to, um, you know, work with our community for those services and, and hopefully there's things that you will have more access to than, than I will probably ever be able to figure out.
We are on a, we are in an, I, I would be in the hospital once a day, our staff...
I mean, in terms of, of the long-term picture, you know, to find something that we can do to, to get that, to get resources here.
Yeah.
That can be available.
Yeah, and I, there is a group called the Behavioral Action Group that we meet with the hospital, the police department, um, also the state troopers, um, the prison system and the court, and they, this has been an issue that's brought, brought up there as well, so, I, you know, I hear you.
I, I probably, you'll probably hear me more.
Okay, and that's great. Was there anything else I know?
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah.
Not for Joe, though, it's for Carl. Uh, Carl, under recitals, uh, for Akila, uh, the properties that are mentioned, one is the car house, is that in any way going to be involved in the timeline schedule for the hospital renovation?
It will be.
So is there going to be a, some kind of language addressing the car house specifically as far as maybe having to vacate it prior to the three-year term?
We have negotiated those provisions with Akila, so we'll, we'll check.
What provisions are made for that facility when it's being vacated?
It's, it will essentially go away and Akila's going to have to find alternative quarters.
It just keeps getting better.
All right, call the roll, please.
Harris?
I.
Coos?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
First run.
I.
That passes seven and up, and brings us down to unfinished business, item six A one, discontinued use of Ted Berry Civic Center as a venue for Ketchikan Fight Club's competitive events, deferreds from May sixteenth. Um, council member Severson?
Thank you. Um, first of all...
First of all, this was deferred to give Jack an opportunity to be here and explain his particular take on this, and this is by no means any disrespect to the Fight Club itself, and I duly respect Jack and his family and the people that are involved in this. What this comes down to is strictly a facility issue, and the city has a lot wrapped up in that particular facility, and we are presently, I believe, looking at new carpeting, new chairs. There have been some incidents, and in order to bring this forward, and I didn't bring this forward just because I had a problem with the Fight Club, I brought this forward for the fact that there had been some issues brought forward to staff about, you know, the bloodborne pathogens, the moldy tarps, inebriates being left in the, in the bathrooms afterward. That speaks to the TAM regulations as far as over-serving. I have a problem with the carpets with all the beer and stuff being spilled into them at every event in order to get them cleaned up, and whether or not there are means to mitigate that. I don't disagree with Jack's recommendations to sit down and see if this can be worked out with staff. The problem I have is this type of an event is usually taken place in a sporting arena that has hard surfaces, that is generally set up for crowds with beer and alcohol that, because in those type of events, people are moving back and forth and everything, and they bump into each other and get up in cheer, and they spill stuff, I mean, that's to be expected. But we have a vested interest in the, in the Ted Perry Civic Center, and that was the main purpose, or the reason why I brought this forward. And I think that, whereas Jack has made some considerable concessions and efforts to try to mitigate those through conversations with the director up there, I would, I would still be reserved until we see all the outcome of that particular conversations and decisions. Because the last thing I want is, is issues with that facility moving forward. Thank you.
So the council, the motion on the table right now, as we heard, we advised the Fight Club that the Ted Perry Civic Center no longer be available as a venue for the organization of competitive events. Artie?
Is there one scheduled coming up?
No, usually scheduled for November, and then April, so we don't have one scheduled for February.
Was there also a question about fireproof tarps?
I'd have to defer to Chief Chair on that.
Chief Chair, was there, in this type of an event, was there, I noticed someplace I had read something about the need to purchase maybe a fireproof tarp, is that?
Frank, Chair Fire Chief, any of the tarps are gonna be hung vertical, need to be NFPA seven oh one. I did some preliminary research, got some numbers from Rhonda as far as how much they would have to tarp. It'd be in the neighborhoods of about five to six hundred dollars for those fireproof tarps, and it would just be the vertical ones, so ones on the floor don't have to meet that standard. But because of the vertical fire spread, you need the fireproof ones.
Matt?
Yeah, I, I'm not a fan of fighting unless it happens at a hockey game, but I don't have any issue with this. I think, I think this, this serves a complete purpose in the community. I think it, it allows people to enjoy a sport that they want to enjoy, and it's in a, in a, as controlled an environment as our community can provide. I don't think we should be kicking them out. That said, I think there are some changes that do need to be made, and I don't, I don't think it's inappropriate for the city or the management at the Ted Perry Civic Center to request changes and work with the companies to do that. I appreciate the answers to the questions in the packet provided by the Fight Club and in the packet provided by the city staff. I do have a concern with the cleanliness of the facility, and I, my personal opinion is that the Fight Club should have to purchase the next day just to make sure that it is clean and ready to go and available for rent. I don't think that's an excessive expense, but I don't, I don't see any reason to kick them out at this point in time, as long as we're following the procedures on both sides, and as long as everything's working out and, and nothing illegal is happening up there. I think they should be able to do what they want to do and allow the community to have this avenue for letting out certain passions.
Anybody else? Sam?
Thanks. I think we got, Mr., I think we got your attention, Jack, and I think that the, the issues are gonna be addressed, and I'm certainly not going to support the motion where the Fight Club can no longer use the Civic Center, that's ridiculous. I think that what goes on there, I mean, one of the kids that works for me, his name is Sampson Molenex, and he's, he fights, fights in that, and, you know, I'm glad that there's something that he really, truly loves to do and gets to do it here in Ketchikan. And I think that this is a quality of life issue, and I think that, from what I've seen, that this isn't completely out of hand, I think we have a responsible person that's running it. I think that we're going to work on our differences and get them worked out. I'm confident of that, absolutely. So I'm not gonna be supporting the motion to do that, and I'm looking forward to resolving this. Thank you.
Well, Dan, then.
I've attended one of the fights, and one of the things I have a problem with is the amount of alcohol that was being consumed. I know that it's all within the parameters of the event and what's going on there, but I have to say, there were a lot of people that were really belligerent. I mean, those were things I personally observed. I worry, I worry about them getting into cars and leaving, and I know that Car Police Department is in, you know, in charge of taking care of those kinda things, but I, there was just a lot of belligerent, intoxicated people, to the point where for me to enjoy the fight was impossible. I mean, it just wasn't, I wasn't able, I mean, people were standing up and yelling obscenities, they were yelling derogatory remarks about the, um, the girls in the ring, and I think it was a direct relation to the amount of alcohol they consumed. But it made me not enjoy the event as much. I mean, I, I enjoy entertainment values of things and stuff, but because of the amount of alcohol that was circulating through that thing, that event, it just became real disheartening, I guess, in some respects, too, to be able to sit there and, and enjoy. And I was with several other people, and we were all experiencing the same thing. I mean, it was, wanted to go, we wanted to enjoy, we wanted to see the different things. You know, I've watched them on TV before, and I've never actually been able to attend one locally, so I thought, this would be cool. Actually, it wasn't a pleasant experience because of the intoxicated people, and there was no control over them. I mean, the things that they were saying and the things that they were doing, I didn't notice anyone coming over and saying, hey, you know, get off the chairs, or, and I was disappointed in that, that part of it. You know, for the amount of money you pay for a ticket and whatnot to be there, not everyone wants to be drunk watching these things. So it was disheartening that, you know, as friends and family, we couldn't go to something like that and actually enjoy the fights. That's just my personal take on it.
Bob?
Yeah, I know that part of the response talked about the philosophy of martial arts and, and peace and tranquility and stuff, and I don't think it carries over into the fight night. But having said that, I think that there are issues that need to be worked out. So I was wondering if this is one of those issues that would be deferred to see if those issues could be resolved and brought back at a time that there's a mutual agreement, or the lack of a mutual agreement between the parties.
We can defer it until management meets with Mr. Duckworth and talks about everything.
Would you defer?
And I think if there's any concerns that the individual councilmembers have, they should get them to Carl. But I would make a motion to defer.
Mayor, before we defer, I wanna make a comment. Otherwise, we don't, I guess the, well, first the question, I'm gonna direct this toward KJ, is, does the vendor for liquor in there have any responsibility to not serve somebody that's integrated?
Understandable, yes.
Okay, so, it's just one, something I wanted to clarify in my own mind. And I was gonna, I think, go with Bob, that there's some issues we've set up here, and I think we need to find out what, and can we agree upon it, on something that can make it work and keep that place clean and keep it a clean outfit, or not? And so it needs to come back to us like Bob suggested.
Carl, you understand what the council wants?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Let's vote on the deferment. Call the roll, please.
You made the motion.
I did make the motion.
Who's second?
I agree.
KJ made one, too, so we're gonna.
We'll meet in the parking lot.
Motion to defer. Wes?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
No.
First run?
Yeah, okay.
Harris?
Yes.
Seibertson?
Yes.
Kuse?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to one, that drops us down to new business seventy-one, Ada and S P N report to the City of Ketchikan, Ketchikan, Gateway, Burrell, and I hear they're gonna wanna put on a little presentation.
So is it gonna take a couple minutes to set this up, Your Honor?
I'm gonna ask them, I don't think so. Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, councilmembers. My name is Adam Beck, representing Alaska Shipping Dry Dock and Alaska Industrial Development and Export Authority, here to give the annual report on the Ketchikan Shipyard as per the memorandum of understanding between City of Ketchikan, Gateway, Burrell, and Ada. I know you've got a really packed agenda tonight, and you've received our written report, so I'm gonna kinda cruise through this really, really quick. If you have any questions, feel free to jump in, or at the end. In the past, our reports have basically focused on appropriations and shipyard improvements. This year, I asked Ada to do something a little different, which I think is more in the, the intent of the MOU, which is for you to get a progress report on how we're doing and meeting our goals of the MOU. So there's four basic goals, just paraphrasing real quickly. The first one, which is continued operation of an adequately capitalized, properly equipped, and operated shipyard on a long-term, sustainable basis. I think to that effect, the former owner certainly has done his due diligence in bringing in a company that's a little bit better capitalized, has a greater financial strength, and certainly far greater bonding capacity, which is really critical in our industry. That should, in and of itself, will give us access to more work and, on a more long-term, sustained basis. Some of the challenges that we face in goal number one, the biggest one, which is our deferred maintenance R and R fund, which pays to, basically reimburses us at cost levels to maintain the shipyard. It's currently still set at the two thousand and five levels, before a lot of the improvements have been done, which caps it at two and a half million. Right now, that fund is pretty substantially underfunded at about one and a half million. All of the payments that we make in revenue and our profit sharing, first half to see that fund reach its full value, and actually to a hundred and twenty-five percent before any of that money gets dispersed back through the, to the Burrell or the city. So we're working on increasing our revenues so that we can, we can bring that fund up, and we'll also be working with Ada to adjust the fund based on the additional improvements that require maintenance of the shipyard. Couple other things that we've done, we recently completed at the recommendation of KPU Water Department, cross-connect study, and installed backflow preventers in all of our locations to preventing backflow to the municipal water system, and there, our final report went out to them today, and we'll be visiting with them to get a final document that that issue's finally been put to bed. Goal number two in the MOU deals with implementation of the development plan, providing closed facilities for shipbuilding and repair. As you know, our development plan is in progress. We were successful last year in obtaining a ten million dollar state appropriation, that's adding to our existing assembly hall with the steel and fabrication shop. We expect construction to complete there late this summer. We're also working on our, our final development plan to complete the shipyard. I wanna emphasize the word "complete the shipyard." We do intend to come forth with a plan that shows that there is an end in sight, and in fact, we're actually working to remove some of the very expensive features that, in our opinion, do not add efficiency and value, and hopefully bring down the overall cost of completing the shipyard. Some of those things that will be going forth in two thousand and fifteen to try to get some near-term funding on, will be relocating our electrical substations so that we can open up another land level berth, and at the same time, we would upgrade that, and that would help with some of our power factor issues back to the public power grid. Also adding some additional transfer cars and things, so we can get more vessels in and out of the water, as well as finishing some of the things that we're not funded to completion that currently exists for the shipyard. Goal number three, just real quick, which basically is functional replacement and putting South Berth back in the hands of the shipyard. I believe most of you are aware where that stands. We do have occupancy now of the warehouse and buildings in the uplands, are just waiting for AMHS to get their functional replacement out in Ward Cove, so that we can occupy a new South Berth. They currently have seven and a half million dollars appropriated towards that, and I believe are finalizing their plan and going forth with, looking for funding sources to finish that out. Goal four, I save the best for last, speaks to the preservation and expansion to the extent practical of the regional and state economic benefits associated with shipyard. Those communities supported the shipyard for many, many years, and I'm proud to report some of the benefits that are coming back to the community. Vigor industrial acquired ASD on March first, two thousand and twelve. And in two thousand and twelve, we increased overall employment at the shipyard nineteen percent to a total of a hundred and fifty-seven employees. Over ninety-eight percent of those employees are Ketchikan residents. Today, we are at a hundred and nineteen, which is fairly typical for us. When we enter the summer season, our work does slow down, as the ferries, tugs, and barges and what have you, and fish boats that we typically work on are out earning revenue in the summer, and the last place we wanna be in the summer is in the shipyard. But fortunately, we've had very few layoffs, and the majority of the folks that are not working there today are at their own will, that either prefer not to work in the summer or have access to other summer jobs that they can do and move work in the shipyard. In addition to the increased employment, when we started there, those employees all received quite an enhanced benefits package over what they previously received. This includes additional medical benefits, lower deductibles, lower costs out of pocket. We did a eight percent match on our 401K, and in all, we gave folks ten paid holidays that they previously did not have, additional vacation accrual, et cetera, et cetera. And on an average, that increased the wage of the average person in two thousand and twelve there by fifteen percent. Now, most of you are aware of the economic climate that we experienced today, and let's see how many other folks are out there getting fifteen percent increases, there's not a lot of them.
So you're gonna do that every year, right, Adam?
So in two thousand and thirteen, which I will report to you next year, just two weeks ago, we put in place our new wage and classification structure, and the average employee received seventeen percent wage increase. So, in the months that we've been there, the average hourly employee down there now makes thirty-two percent more than they did on February twenty-ninth of last year. That's something that I'm pretty proud to bring to you today, and we'll work to continue to do that. We had some situations there that needed to be corrected, and we've corrected them as quickly as we possibly could. One other thing I'd like to also comment, that I think that goes directly to local economic benefit, I think this is something that we've taken a little bit of undue criticism on, and that's support of local vendors. In two thousand and eleven, Alaska Shipping Dry Dock had a total of two point eight million that was paid out to local vendors within this zip code. In two thousand and twelve, that number went up to five point five million. I think that number speaks for itself, and certainly there's not everything that's bought local, but by and large, we are supporting local, and have certainly increased that number nearly double. So again, something that I'm, I'm proud to speak to today. And with that, I'll leave it unless there's any questions.
I have one. Have you ever heard from the state about building a ferry?
We have. Unfortunately, I don't have anything really new to report that I don't think you are all aware of. The state is in the design concept status right now. They have told us that they still hope to complete that by the end of this year with a negotiated price, so that we can, we're fortunate enough to win that contract to start construction by early next year.
So they're talking about handing this share out?
To complete their design, correct, and negotiate price, which is pretty consistent with what they've said, been saying.
Anybody else? Bob?
Yeah, I noticed that when you were speaking about your R and R at two point five, would you expect that to rise to with the new facilities that you had in place?
We're just starting to look at that right now. It's, fortunately, it's, you know, it's new, very modern facility. I, I don't think... Uh, we're just starting to look at that right now. Yeah, it's fortunately, it's, you know, it's new, very modern facility. Um, I, I don't think there'll be a, you know, a, a substantial doubling of that, but it'll, it'll certainly be an increase, but I, I can't speak today to what that'll, that'll actually be.
Yes, Sam?
I just wanted to thank you for coming forward and giving such an excellent report. Um, it's obvious that your company is, uh, doing a lot of good for Ketchikan. I was really pleased to hear about your doubling, that, uh, the amount of money that you're spending locally, plus the increase in wages for the employees. I think that's outstanding and I was very glad to hear that and thanks for coming forward.
Happy to do it.
Thank you, Sam. Matt?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo a little bit of Sam was saying and we had the oppor- my class had the opportunity to tour your facility a couple of days ago and, uh, not only did they really enjoy it, I think they got a lot of benefit from it and I did as well. And you can see the improvement that you guys have gone through and you can see the staffing levels you have and I really like the direction that you're going. Thank you.
Okay, um, we're scheduled for executive session, but I, um, we still have a KIC rep here. I'd like to take care of the KIC hatchery thing and then go into executive session if nobody has any... All right, let's do that. That moves us to item seven A two, um, response to request for, uh, the, um, for endorsement of using commercial passenger funding to support the Dremont Fish Hatchery Elastic Cruise Association. Go ahead, Sam.
Um, I don't have a motion prepared at this time. Um, but I'm just glad to see that Irene was here. And rather than me paraphrase what, uh, KIC wants to do, if it's just you, I think I will turn it over to Irene and let her explain it herself.
Come on.
Thank you. Irene Dundas, nineteen twenty-two Ferry Chasm. Um, well, as of right now, we have, um, the council had chosen to, you know, close the hatchery, turn the, over the keys at the end of June. And if there was any additional funding that was coming from the city, um, would have been very nice and thank you for offering the resources to be able to possibly extend, um, the hatchery being open. Um, I think that would possibly prolong it to find additional funding like grants. We do have some grants, um, being written right now. Um, we do not know when those grants would be even granted. Um, and I think if the city chose not to make that funding available and we did not qualify for that funding, then, um, all we would ask is if the backlot be replotted and, um, then we could turn the keys over. We cannot, um, operate the hatchery. The sequester comes out in this month and for additional funding, the federal, we can't continue operating the, the hatchery any longer over the years and so that's...
If the city gave you eighty-five thousand, they could, um, you could run that to the end of the year?
Um, we could, it would possibly prolong it. We do have a tribal council meeting on Monday and that would be a new, um, position for us to discuss at the table.
And another thing I have is, um, 'cause I've talked to council members and, you know, some would like to see it go as a hatchery, but from talking to some, um, KIC people, it looks like you guys might have other ideas of what you'd like to do with that and I'm not against, um, you guys doing something different with it if it's not a hatchery and, um, is... And I think even though we have that thing in the, you know, if it's not a hatchery, it reverts back to the city, but if you came with a proposal of something else you guys wanted to utilize with it, I don't see the council to, you know, um, I mean, we can still have a, the clause in there if you revert from whatever you're planning on doing. I, I don't see us having a problem changing that to something other than the hatchery. Um, and I don't think it would, I don't think the council would be, um, I believe would be against you guys trying to develop some. Otherwise, it's just gonna sit there empty. If you guys wanted to invest in something else, I don't think the city would have a problem. I hope that I'm not supporting that, uh, without eliminating that clause in the agreement. Um, just so you guys came and, you know, gave a presentation of what you guys would like to do, but council members would have to speak to that themselves. But, um, if, um, if it just reverts back to us, we just gotta, you know, we got just a, oh, a empty building and, um, nothing going on, we could either sell it, but if you guys had ideas of something else over there to make an attraction, I'd have no problem, um, um, changing to whatever you guys want to do over there.
Yes, and I think with the additional, you know, the eighty-five thousand, if that was to help us through the end of the year, that does help prolong, you know, to see if we get the grant funding that we had applied for and, you know, possibly, you know, next year or the years after that. But as of, the eighty-five thousand couldn't carry us out through the year after that and the year after that. It would just help prolong for this year and it, you know, help buy time is what it is till we find out.
Sam and Bob.
What we'd wanna do then tonight is, um, so if I'm, if I'm understanding you right, Irene, and if we granted some money tonight, it would actually prolong the discussion so that the council could keep the thing operating and we could start talking about what it would actually take if you changed the, the use and then we could talk about a different, uh, use on the, on the, on the deed and see if that was amenable to KIC. So I guess, uh, I just wanted to kinda get understanding where we're going with this tonight.
Um, well, that's my thought is, um, if we wanna keep the hatchery going for this year, we're gonna have to come up, um, help out with eighty-five thousand, but if they, you know, down the road, if they're planning on doing something else in there with, uh, attraction, I don't have a problem, um, switching it to whatever they wanna use that for. Uh, Bob?
Uh, a couple of issues. Um, Carl, have, have we seen a financial report on the hatchery operation to see where these funds, what, what the shortage is or what the, the expense is compared to the revenue?
Councilmember Severson, nothing other than the presentation that was made to the council by KIC, um, two or three meetings.
Before, before I could vote to give him eighty-five thousand dollars, I had to quantify the, the, um, the finances to see if there was, you know, how the money was spent or how the money was earned, that type of stuff. Also, uh, as speaking to just off the cuff, uh, what the mayor brought forward, right now, they utilize the property, um, for the operation of the hatchery. If the hatchery was to go away, there would be a, a lease agreement with dollars exchanged rather than services. I don't think that you would give the building for nothing. It is a city asset.
Are you talking about the property?
Oh, I know, yeah. Right now, they have the property because they're operating the hatchery. If that hatchery part would go away, then we'd be, we would need monetary reimbursement to replace that, of some, of some amount, is what I would see.
I imagine they'd wanna tear it down and put up something new. That's what I'm, I just wanna make it so it's, uh, if they have another plan of attractions over there, I would love to talk to you guys about it and work with you instead of just saying, no, you don't have a hatchery to buy. So that's what I wanna do across. Anybody else? Jan?
I just wanted to clarify that that eighty-five thousand was to continue to run it as a hatchery.
Correct.
If I can get another tip at the well here. I'm, this is as clear as mine to me, so I'm trying to figure out where this is going.
Well, we don't have a motion.
We don't have, we don't have a motion, but I, I don't wanna give one yet until I figure out where, where I think we can go. So I, I think what I will do is offer up a motion to use eighty-five thousand dollars from CPV funds to continue operation of the hatchery. And at the same time, I wanna get, um, discussion going with KIC.
Can we have a second on that first?
I'll second.
Thank you.
About a path forward to, uh, to, to see what we can do down there and how we can work with KIC to preserve the jobs down there and preserve the infrastructure and to see what the plan is down the road. You know, some of the things that I have heard that was, uh, considered were a longhouse and a totem park. And I think that would certainly add to the visitor destination appeal of Ketchikan. And then also, on, on a historical note, it was also brought to my attention that a long time ago that there was a totem park down there. And I can't think of anybody else who could possibly put that totem park back in other than KIC. You know, you could just, you just can't, you know, export that one out to somebody else or... So I think this discussion is worth having and I hope that, uh, the council will see fit to do that, at least keep this going for a long, for a while and that'll...
All right, Marty, Dick and Bob.
Um, where did the eighty-five thousand dollar figure come from?
Um, John Brown came here and said that's what they'd need to keep it going through the end of the year.
Okay, that was a back at that meeting?
Yeah, he says it takes about a hundred and eighty-five thousand a year to run it, running the basis, but they need the eighty-five to get through the rest of the year.
Okay, thanks. And the other thing was about the CPV funds. I thought that there had been a mission, gave, given us a decision that might not be appropriate to have that come out of CPV funds.
No, I disagree.
Okay, just checking.
Okay.
Um, hold it. Marty, Dick, Bob and Sam.
Come down.
Okay.
Hey, I, I cannot support the motion with the eighty-five thousand dollars coming out of CPV money. I think it's wrong, just flat wrong. And, uh, some day we'll, we'll pay for it. Uh, I, I do not have a problem with the mayor's suggestion that, uh, KIC bring back a plan for us to see what it is that, uh, we might be able to live with, to be, to give them the money maybe under the same conditions that the property's under now. But I think it's okay for, for it to stay there. And, uh, and my only other comment would be, there's lots of totem pole parks in town, so you're in competition with everybody if you're trying to make money to keep it running. It's really competition from north and the south and other places, so make sure you got a good business plan to deal with it. But, uh, I can't support the motion to CPV money in that.
Bob?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, ask what the hatchery schedule is. What do we have for, uh, fish and when is our release and what would this eighty-five thousand dollar, would it allow us to, um, gather more eggs, start another incubation? Or are we done at the end of this July or in the release or...
Well, there would be still the release, you know, during this month. I mean, the plans was for the council to turn over the keys at the end of, end of this month. And so that would continue. You'd have, you know, fish next year. And so that would just continue to make, you know, whatever we had goes on till the end of the year, just to probably prolong it. There was talks that we wanted to possibly go into, you know, something with the university to possibly help kids train, um, work with the Sea Tech Center to get the, to, um, you know, help teach the life cycle of the fish and, and the release process and that whole thing. And that, of course, would come through the grant funding and, and the, you know, creative writing of, of the people that we have that are working on those grants right now. And we don't have a answer from the grant funders until, until later on.
Sam?
It's also my understanding, Irene, that this is time-sensitive, so we don't have, we can't kick this can down the road.
It is, yes, it is time, time-sensitive, yes.
Like, we don't, we don't get an answer tonight. I think that KIC, from what, what I've been hearing from other folks, is just going to turn the keys over. So I normally, you know, and it, there's been a whole list of, uh, bad things that have happened over at KIC and a lot of it is financial and a lot of it is due to federal funding and a lot of it is self-inflicted. But it doesn't change our funding ability. And this, this whole thing is brought on by, you know, every year, this thing has lost money and cost them, I, it was done under the auspices of, of economic development. Well, it never made money. I think it made money one year, so...
Just kept in the black.
It cannot go on. It can't be subsidized anymore because there is no money within the organization to continue on with this subsidy. And, um, a lot of folks have said that, uh, they would be happy if it just went away because it's just, it's too much on, on the financial side, so, um, if we decide to, to, to not fund this tonight, I think that we're gonna wind up with this building. And I think one of the things that is gonna happen, I think that the, uh, the value that you're hearing that this building is worth is probably not there. I think it actually has a negative net value if you take away the cost of removing a fish hatchery off of a stream and then plus an old building and all of the other things. And, uh, we're gonna have another old hospital on our hands. And that's not words that I came up with. That's from what I hear from others that work here. And so I, I think, I, I think it's well worth our time that we take some money out of CPV, which, which I think is a, is a totally legitimate expenditure of these funds and keep this conversation going. If you decide not to do that, then this is the end of it. Thanks.
Jan?
So I just wanted to clarify something with Sam. So are you saying if we give him this eighty-five thousand, we're basically just throwing eighty-five thousand dollars away because inevitably it's just going to be...
No, but what, what we are going to do is...
We're just prolonging the inevitable.
We're not prolonging the inevitable. What we're doing is we're giving KIC a chance to figure out how they can preserve ownership of this property.
But the eighty-five thousand...
And then also, it would continue on with, they would be opening up the hatchery tour again and they would be collecting fish.
Fish would still be going up the stream possibly.
But if it's losing money and there's no revenue generation, alls we're doing is putting more money into something that's not...
There is revenue generation. When they open, when they open, they keep the thing open during the summertime, don't they have tour revenues?
There is, yeah, there is some tours. There, the tours did go down due to the, the eagle, um, the eagle viewing that was going on there. That, we had mews and they weren't to state coast, we had to let the eagles go. But they do have tours to, to see the fish and the hatchery and the process of, of the, the fish cycle.
It's just a concern. You know, I understand your, your situation and I, you know, sympathize with it, but at the same time, you know, putting more money into something that is, it doesn't sound like something KIC wants to continue. Anyway, this is just a Band-Aid so that we could give all of us time to come up with another solution. It seems like we're putting eighty-five thousand dollars...
Y- yes, well, I, I don't know.
And I'm not saying that, you know, it's, it's not a good endeavor. I mean, it's certainly a worthwhile endeavor and I've always enjoyed going up there and, and looking around and stuff, but I'm just concerned with putting more money into something that, you know, is probably...
Marty?
Yeah, I was just wondering, if, if they did turn over the keys at the end of the month, at what point are these fish, are they in their, in their life stage to be released? I mean, are we right in the middle of the process or is it the end of the process or the beginning of the process? I mean, I...
We're all gonna take shifts.
Yeah.
No, I mean, if, if we close it down, I mean, are, what, what...
I, I think what happens, Marty, and I think the, the June first date or the end of this month date was because they're going to release the fish and then they're just going to...
Okay, so the fish would be released?
Released, but there's also fish coming in.
Right, okay.
And, and a big quantity, I guess, from what I'm understanding. I've never really paid that much attention to it.
Yeah, but that was my question. So fish would be released by the end of the year?
Right.
Okay, and, and that particular cycle of events would be completed?
And then you'd have a whole bunch of hatchery fish coming up looking through the happy spawning grounds and...
Yeah, I got, I got that.
I got it, I got it.
Which was really a bunch of guys collecting all of them.
Got it, you're right.
Okay, so everybody understands right now the motion is to do the eighty-five thousand, um, then to, um, finish running it through the end of the year gives KIC time to decide if they wanna continue a hatchery or come up with a new plan and see if we wanna work with them at that point. Uh, Matt?
Yeah, I, I don't have any heartburn at this point over using the CPV funds, just strictly from, we reached out to talk with the cruise agency and their response was we don't support any, we don't, we don't give a yes or a no. They could have really helped us out here. And instead, they just wanna wait and they're waiting and seeing how we're gonna use it and whether or not it can possibly be used against the, the head tax or not used against it. That's my interpretation. So I don't have any heartburn over because they had the opportunity for input and they chose not to exercise that. I do have a little bit of heartburn with the justification of just, uh, putting the eighty-five thousand over there without much of a guarantee, especially for, for going on in the future, um, and whether or not we need to, you know, we're at that point really where we're, we have to decide whether or not we really want fish to be coming back into the creek. In terms of those, those types, the, the, the non-pink ti- pink species. And we have to decide whether or not we wanna, want that building operated or want that facility or area operated that's in a manner that possibly does not enhance city park and in a manner that possibly does not enhance, um, the air center across the creek. So I'm, I'm a little con- I'm not conflicted at all about using CPV funds at this point. But, um, wondering if, if our whole main goal here is the fish, whether or not looking, looking out south and seeing if we can put the money out there, it would be cheaper to contract with, uh, Sarah to make sure that the fish are collected and all that. But I'm, my main concern is where this property goes in the future and what it is going to be used for. Right now, it's used to enhance the community educationally and aesthetically, um, but I... used to enhance the community educationally and aesthetically. Um, but I would, I would hate to see it go in, and just as Dick said, if we're going to, I, I understand the concept of the longhouse, and I understand the concept of a totem park, but Saxon has a great economy based on that in the summer, and I would hate to, hate to take business away from that area. I would hate to see the Heritage Center become next to nothing and us just sitting there supporting that, and then five or six years down the line have to look at that. So the, the bigger issue for me is the long-term, the long-term aspect of what this property's gonna have happen.
Dick?
Yeah, I, like I say, I don't support the eighty-five thousand from CPV, and probably wouldn't support the eighty-five thousand to keep the fish hatchery going, simply because we've been more or less told it's not ever gonna sustain itself, and it's gonna cost a subsidy of two-hundred thousand dollars a year running. I don't have a problem with KIC coming back even after July one and making a proposal for the property, 'cause then we can work out a deal. But I, I, right now, it sounds to me like the fish hatchery is basically, it can't sustain itself, and, and we don't wanna sustain it as two, uh, two-hundred thousand to quarter million dollars a year, which is what it apparently takes to run it. So to me, it's, there's sort of two different issues, and, and I can't support the fish hatchery part.
Well, let's take a vote and see where we stand. I think everybody's got the gist of where we all think, so.
I don't buy the motion.
The motion is to, to fund the hatchery eighty-five thousand.
And then your other op, your other discussion was to meet with KIC and...
We're gonna have KIC come back to us. They're the ones working on proposals of what to do with the property. They could come back to us and uh, tell us what they'd like to do, since we still have that trigger in there, if it's not a hatchery, um, that comes back to the city. But if they come up with another plan, we can adjust that.
I have a quick question for you, Matt, before we go on with this. Carl, do you have any idea of what it would cost the city if we took ownership of this thing, and what we would do with it, and how we would handle the large building and the fish hatchery and all that infrastructure? And do you have any ballpark idea of any associated cost with those things?
What we do with it long-term, I don't have a clue. Um, if we end up taking title back, the first thing we're gonna have to do is go in and do an assessment of what's there, what needs to be immediately addressed. I've never been in the building, so I, I, I can't come in. Uh, we're gonna have to get it insured, I can tell you that right off the top. Um, we'll be responsible for the utilities. Uh, you will be incurring some immediate costs, there's no question about that. I could ask Mr. Allen if he wants to get into uh, the hatchery.
No, I think he would tell you he's got enough funds.
All right, well, let's vote on this and see where we're at. Call the roll, please.
Seaverton?
No.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Kuss?
No.
Harris?
No.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
So it's like, are we gonna flee or something?
It's up to you, Marty.
It's two, three.
Um, yes.
And Carlson?
It's all on you.
Okay, that motion passes four to three. You can see how divided the council is.
I'm gonna be the other one.
Um, so um, we go ahead with the funding, and hopefully KIC will come back to us with their grants can come through, and they can see what they want to propose when they're here. All right.
Your honor, are we gonna have any accounting on how that funding's spent?
Carl?
I think inquiries, if you want the accounting of the financial operation of the hatchery, I can make that request to KIC.
Thank you very much.
How that money's gonna be spent.
All right, now that brings us down to the executive session. Do we have a motion? It's on the agenda somewhere.
Your honor?
Go ahead.
I move the city council to clear that it's in the best interest of the city to go into executive session in accordance with KMC 204025A1 and AS 4462310C1 and 3, to discuss Miller Construction Company Limited's lawsuit regarding termination of contract number 1121, Jackson Monroe Street and Fourth and Seventh Avenue Reconstruction Projects, case number IKEE 1200412C1, S-CI, as set forth in the company's complaint dated August the 22nd, 2012, which includes the need to discuss subjects, the knowledge of which would have an adverse impact upon the finances of the city, and to discuss potential litigation strategies with legal counsel within the attorney-client privilege.
Good, and seconded. Call the roll.
Kuss?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Hi.
West?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
Seaverton?
Yeah.
Olson?
Yes.
They passed the six to one. Jurn out of this meeting. Let's adjourn in the other room, please.
I'll, I'll be back in a minute.
You bet.
I'm gonna talk to you.
You guys.
We adjourned our executive session, we gave management legal counsel direction. We have no further action at this time. Bring us back to the regular agenda which is 7A5 negotiation contract bill before solid waste recycling handling facility expansion design Tetra Tech. Bob?
Yeah, I'm with the city council, authorized the city manager to negotiate a professional service agreement with Terra Tech Inc. for contract number 1204 solid waste recycling handling facility for extension design and agreement to be submitted to the city council for formal consideration and approval.
Who didn't second it? Bob?
You know, we went, Welsh Whiteley went before and did a design, I think we have the paperwork on it. I guess I'm wondering what Terra Tech is going to be doing for the amount of money that we're talking about here. I haven't seen the plans or understand what we're doing.
Morgan Berry, Public Works Contracts and Grants Administrator. Welsh Whiteley's design was schematic, it wasn't fully developed. Tetra Tech would be taking those concepts and analyzing the building to see how the functions work together for how the expanded space would enable the recycling program, the, I forget, it's the hazardous wastes.
Household hazardous waste.
I believe that was one of them. There was also room for-
Mechanic work.
Mechanic work, but dry processing of like coolant, I think was one of the, like refrigerant.
Oh yeah, we do removal refrigerant.
Yeah, yeah, it was providing additional space for that so that it gave sufficient room for those functions to be performed more or less simultaneously. They'd be analyzing those functions and then they also alluded to a number of other features incorporated into the building that would accommodate those activities that were not necessarily present in Welsh Whiteley's design.
Is the footprint basically the same, bigger?
At this point, it's up in the air. I mean, that's up to the designers. And with, of course, will we bring any designs back for you guys, once we get to that point, it's still in process.
So what Terra Tech can do is more or less look at the design for efficiency, because I think like if it's a Star building, Star will actually do the engineering to attach to their existing building with the metal, or anybody would have a gift. And concrete slabs for wind loading bearing are pretty standardized. I don't think there's a lot of basic building engineering that may need to be done.
Maybe the systems, that's kind of the biggest function in that.
Yeah, and I think originally we had talked about, we have the equipment to do the refrigerant, we have the, you know, the baler for doing stuff and maybe some storage bins, that kind of stuff. But you have to do get into whether it's going to be a heated space, whether to have ventilation for welding and that type of stuff. But what we're talking about with Terra Tech is more of the efficiencies of the operation and how it melds into the existing facility.
Correct, and the programs to be performed there. How it could be arranged to accommodate those different programs, what design features need to be incorporated into it to perform those functions, the code impacts of, if welding is part of it, then the code implications to that, you know, having a main shop versus the other functions.
Definitely need some more moving up there. Thank you.
Okay, Sam then Dick?
I was looking at this particular agenda item and also the one further down about P and D and the design for the rest of the earths. It seems to me like $175,000 is a lot of money to be doing the programming and that kind of a thing. And it seems like, aren't we just talking about like landfill waste and recycling? Can't we do our own programming? Can't we get a local person to help us with this? I mean, a lot of this stuff, I think we could do ourselves. And I don't really want to put out $175,000 to Tetra Tech. You know, I think that we're exporting our own economy. I think we have the ability to do a lot of this work in-house. I'm not going to support this. I don't think that, you know, I want to see what, you know, if you're planning on spending $175,000 on a design, I want to know what the programming is ahead of time. I want to see more than what I'm seeing here. I mean, what's the goal?
Well, we'll be bringing back, we'll be bringing back the negotiated contract. One component of that is the programming in addition to the fact they'll develop into an entire building.
Why aren't we doing our own programming? Why can't we do, figure out what it is that we want to do?
Councilmember Bergeron, if I could, you may- Your public works staff is stretched to the limits right now. Mr. Berry is practically spending all of his time trying to get this building completed and we're encountering all kinds of things that weren't anticipated. Depending on what you do later on the agenda, you're asking us to take on a $58 million hospital project. Mr. Allen can come up and speak to this, but unless you want to give us more people, we're just about at the breaking of the cliff. You want to, your department.
Okay, well, I have a question that kind of follows this up. So what are we planning on spending on the capital construction side? I mean, for $175,000, normally that's nine or 10%. So we're planning on putting a couple, three million into this building?
I think the numbers I've always seen, even under Welsh Whiteley, was about 1.6 to 1.8 million.
It's in the CFP. Do they have the end of it yet?
Yeah, it, three million, I've never seen a number as high as that. But I was under the impression it was about 1.6 to 1.8 million.
What are we trying to accomplish, you know, what we're doing right now? And do we need to take this on right now or should we put this off for a while till we're less busy?
I'm going to defer to Councilmember Severson.
The building as it's designed right now is inefficient to run recycling programs. There is some benefit in certain marketable products that are out there, that plastic has changed, but you have to have internal storage and you have to have quite a bit of storage in order to do that. We tried plastic years ago, but storing it outside, it turned into garbage by the time it got there. If we're going to move ahead with successful recycling programs, we want to make sure that they're, they work well with the equipment we have, which is our baler. We do have a sorting line for materials that may need to be incorporated, relocated. I'm not sure how they, what they plan to, but there's not enough space in the existing building to advance any recycling in the community at this time. And there is a need, we have over $2 million worth of rolling stock up there and there is a need to get adequate maintenance area for that. Right now, we're using a small bay area that we're doing welding next to paper shredding and, you know, it's not a good atmosphere for that and we do need to include that.
Dick?
Yeah, I guess my main concern is, and I think you're going to bring this back to us in a negotiated contract, is I don't know what these guys are going to do. And I don't want them going out and giving me a design of a metal building that's already been designed by a contractor that can provide it. Now, how it fits and how it internal pieces, other things, that's okay. But if they give me a drawing that they've done of erecting a metal building, I'm not going to approve it. Because they can go get it from, like Bob said, these outfits, build buildings and they're already set up. The design is done by them and done by somebody else and it's not by this contractor here. He says, I want this building this size and then it's a raised inside. So I need to see what you bring back to me.
Sam?
Considering the, how busy we all are these days and considering what is our greatest need up there, our greatest need, I would say, would this be correct, Bob, to say that we need to cover up our rolling stock and have a place to work on it?
That's a point big.
I think what we should think about doing is cutting back what the scope of this project is, make a design build out of it and have a contractor come up, give us a proposed design or put an RFP out to do that for return key operation. And then at that same time, you can think about what you want to do for programming on the recyclable part. I mean, certainly I want to do all of this stuff. But, you know, we're talking about $44 million bonds for hospitals. We're running into all kinds of problems in this remodel, which is really on a building this age not to be, it's not unexpected. You know, so it is what it is. So, you know, at some point, we need to reevaluate what we're able to do, what we can afford to do. I'm not really thrilled about getting somebody in here to do something that I think that we could do, make this project smaller, make it simpler and make it easier for you guys.
Well, this comes out of the solid waste reserve, doesn't it?
That's correct, Mr. Berry.
And how much in the reserves are we set aside for the actual construction? Any?
Nothing's been set aside.
Well, I know, but are you looking at utilizing a lot of the reserves?
1.8 and I think there's 3 million in there now.
Yeah, so we can, I mean, we have the money to do this and instead of just storing it in the reserves, I'd like this to move forward and start improving the facilities. I'd just recommend us approving this and getting moving on it. I understand concerns from Sam and others, but it's something that we've been putting on the back burner, on the front burner. Anybody else before we call? Bob?
Morgan, there's also opportunities in the next round to apply for grants for recycling and solid waste stuff. I don't know what kind of monies are out there these days.
The, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt. In my-
...would be taking those concepts and analyzing the building to see how the functions work together. For how the expanded space would enable the recycling program, the... I have to recall. It's the hazardous wastes.
Well, household hazardous waste.
I believe that was one of them. There was also room for...
Mechanic work.
Mechanic work, but dry processing of like coolants, I think was one of the, like refrigerant.
Oh, yeah. We do removal or repurposed.
Yeah, yeah. It was providing additional space for that so that it gave sufficient room for those functions to be performed more or less simultaneously. They'd be analyzing those functions. And then they also alluded to a number of other features incorporated into the building that would accommodate those activities that were not necessarily present in Welsh White's design.
Is the footprint basically the same, bigger?
At this point, it's up in the air. I mean, that's up to the designers. And with, of course, will we bring any designs back for you guys? Once we get to that point, it's still in process.
So what Terratech can do is more or less look at the design for efficiency. Because I think, like, if it's a Star building, Star will actually do the engineering to attach to their existing building with the metal, or anybody would have a gift. And concrete slabs for wind loading bearing are pretty standardized. I don't think there's a lot of basic building engineering that may need to be done.
It'd be the systems. That's kind of the biggest function in that.
Yeah. And I think originally, we had talked about, we have the equipment to do the repurposed. We have the, you know, the baler for doing stuff, and maybe some storage bins, that kind of stuff. But you have to do get into whether it's going to be a heated space, whether to have ventilation for welding and that kind of stuff. But what we're talking about with Terratech is more of the efficiencies of the operation and how it melds into the existing facility.
Correct. And the programs to be performed there. How could be arranged to accommodate those different programs? What design features need to be incorporated into it to perform those functions? The code impacts of, if welding is part of it, then the code implications to that, you know, having a main shop versus the other functions.
Definitely need some more moving up there. Thank you.
Okay, Sam, then Dick.
I was looking at this particular agenda item and also the one further down about PND and the design for the rest of the Berths. It seems to me like $175,000 is a lot of money to be doing the programming and that kind of a thing. And it seems like, aren't we just talking about like landfill waste and recycling? Can't we do our own programming? Can't we get a local person to help us with this? I mean, a lot of this stuff, I think we could do ourselves. And I don't really want to put out $175,000 to Terratech. You know, I think that we're exporting our own economy. I think we have the ability to do a lot of this work in-house. I'm not going to support this. I don't think that, you know, I want to see what, you know, if you're planning on spending $175,000 on a design, I want to know what the programming is ahead of time. I want to see more than what I'm seeing here. I mean, what's the goal?
Well, we'll be bringing back, we'll be bringing back the negotiated contract. One component of that is the programming in addition to the fact they'll develop into an entire building.
Why aren't we doing our own programming? Why can't we do, figure out what it is that we want to do?
Councilmember Bergeron, if I could, you may... Your public works staff is stretched to the limits right now. Mr. Berry is practically spending all of his time trying to get this building completed, and we're encountering all kinds of things that weren't anticipated. Depending on what you do later on in the agenda, you're asking us to take on a $58 million hospital project. Mr. Allen can come up and speak to this, but unless you want to give us more people, we're just about at the breaking line of it. Click. You want to, your department.
Okay. Well, I have a question that kind of follows this up. So what are we planning on spending on the capital construction side? I mean, for $175,000, normally that's nine or 10%. So we're planning on putting a couple, three million into this building?
I think the numbers I've always seen, even under Welsh White, was about 1.6 to 1.8 million.
It's in the CFP. Do they have any of that?
Yeah. Three million, I've never seen a number as high as that. But I was under the impression it was about 1.6 to 1.8 million.
What are we trying to accomplish beyond what we're doing right now? And do we need to take this on right now, or should we put this off for a while till we're less busy?
I'm going to defer to Councilmember Seivertson.
The building as it's designed right now is inefficient to run recycling programs. There is some benefit in certain marketable products that are out there, that plastic has changed. But you have to have internal storage, and you have to have quite a bit of storage in order to do that. We tried plastic years ago, but storing it outside, it turned into garbage by the time it got there. If we're going to move ahead with successful recycling programs, we want to make sure that they're, they work well with the equipment we have, which is our baler. We do have a sorting line for materials that may need to be incorporated, relocated. I'm not sure how they, what management is planning. But there's not enough space in the existing building to advance any recycling in the community at this time. And there is a need, we have over $2 million worth of rolling stock up there, and there is a need to get adequate maintenance area for that. Right now, we're using a small bay area that we're doing welding next to paper shredding. And, you know, it's not a good atmosphere for that. And we do need to include that.
Dick?
Yeah, I guess my main concern is, and I think you're going to bring this back to us in a negotiated contract, is I don't know what these guys are going to do. And I don't want them going out and giving me a design of a metal building that's already been designed by a contractor that can provide it. Now, how it fits and how it internal pieces and other things, that's okay. But if they give me a drawing that they've done of erecting a metal building, I'm not going to approve it. Because they can go get it from, like Bob said, these outfits build buildings, and they're already set up. The design is done by them and done by somebody else, and it's not by this contractor here. He says, I want this building this size. And then it's a raised size. So I need to see what you bring back to me.
Sam?
Considering the, how busy we all are these days, and considering what is our greatest need up there? Our greatest need, I would say, would this be correct, Bob, to say that we need to cover up our rolling stock and have a place to work on it?
That's the point, biggie.
I think what we should think about doing is cutting back what the scope of this project is. Make a design build out of it, and have a contractor come up, give us a proposed design, or put an RFP out to do that, or turn key operation. And then at that same time, you can think about what you want to do for programming on the recyclable part. I mean, certainly, I want to do all of this stuff. You know, we're talking about $44 million bonds for hospitals. We're running into all kinds of problems in this remodel, which is really on a building this age not to be, it's not unexpected. You know, so it is what it is. So, you know, at some point, we need to reevaluate what we're able to do, what we can afford to do. I'm not really thrilled about getting somebody in here to do something that I think that we could do, make this project smaller, make it simpler, and make it easier for you guys.
Well, this comes out of the solid waste reserve, doesn't it?
That's correct, Mr. Berry.
And how much in the reserves are we set aside for the actual construction? Any?
Nothing's been set aside.
Well, I know, but are you looking at utilizing a lot of the reserves?
1.8, and I think there's 3 million in there now.
Yeah. So we can, I mean, we have the money to do this. And instead of just storing it in the reserves, I'd like this to move forward and start improving the facilities. I'd just recommend us approving this and getting moving on it. Understand concerns from Sam and others. But it's something that we've been putting on the back burner, on the front burner. So, anybody else before we call? Bob?
Morgan, there's also opportunities in the next round to apply for grants for recycling and solid waste stuff. I don't know what kind of monies are out there these days.
The, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt. In my experience and from conversations with the state of Alaska, in the municipal matching grant program, unless you've got an active, actively polluted site because of your solid waste practices, which we don't, the odds of getting financing through the non-point source portion of the clean water municipal matching grants is very low. Actually, it's extremely low. I think when we submitted municipal matching grant in 2011, we had, I'm going to say in the range of 500 points, maybe three, no, actually, I think it was as low as 385 points, because our landfill is just not mismanaged. It's as simple as that. We don't have a dump. We have a sanitary landfill. And so unfortunately, that's the case. Now, in the Alaska Clean Water Fund Loan Program, there is a portion of that that's subsidized through, for one, through non-point source activities. When we submitted a request for that in 2010, we qualified for a loan, but we weren't at the position yet to move forward with the project. We qualified for a $1 million loan, of which $100,000 of that would have been subsidized. And from what, at least from what Solid Waste Superintendent Lenny Neely has told me, the program itself, the recycling program, also will have some modest returns that would help defray the cost of construction.
All right. Let's take a roll and see where we're at.
Kuz?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
That passes seven to nothing. We're fine. That brings us to item six, bid contract 1308, Phase Three of Berth One and Two Rehabilitation, Orion Marine Contractors of Anchorage. Do you have a motion?
Here, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council to accept the bid of Orion Marine Contractors of Anchorage, Alaska, in the amount of $7,314,700 for contract number 1308, Phase Three of the Berth One and Two Rehab Project, established 10% contingency in the amount of $731,470, bringing the total project cost to $8,46,170. And authorized funding in the amount of $8,46,170 from the fourth department's 2013, Phase Three of the Berth One and Two Rehab Capitalization Capital Account, and direct the city manager to execute the contract documents on behalf of the city council.
Second. Who didn't second it? Dick?
Nope. We're moving forward. And I guess I've only got one question. The 10% contingency, once again, it seems extremely high. And what I don't like about it is we never know about it till it's all done. And we just...
End of comment. Bob?
Yeah. And I see under the recommendation here, an option that we have, and I think I might want to do that, is to defer. And I don't think it has anything that would penalize us in moving forward. But since this is underfunded, I believe management's going to bring us back a amended budget for consideration to fund this. Is that correct, Colonel? That's what we need to do for this.
We will have to bring a budget amendment back to fund what is not funded in the 2013.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So I'd like to defer until such time as you bring that document to us. If that doesn't interfere with the contract, I mean.
Porton Harbor's Director Steve Corpron, they need to get the piling on order. Otherwise, it's going to set the project back. The moving, all the budget amendment is going to do is move money from 2014 to 2013. Because we had $6 million for Phase Four, we're probably not going to need more than a couple million for Phase Four. We've got plenty of money overall. We have 28 million. So we had $8 million set aside, just in the budget this year, for Phase Three. And it came in at 7.3. But if you want to put the 10% contingency on, you need the budget amendment to award that full amount. But I would not recommend deferring. The key item is getting the piling on order.
Okay, I agree. No problem.
Matt?
So you're telling me that we had eight, we have $8 million this year, $6 million next year, for a total of 14. And the combined stuff for the next two phases will not exceed 14 million?
No, not even close.
All right. Call a roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Kuz?
I don't either.
That passes seven to nothing. That brings us down to item eight, seven. Contract zero seven twenty-five, Amendment eleven, City of Ketchikan, Berth One and Two Rehabilitation, and Master Planning Study, PND Engineering. Do we have a motion? Seven eighty-seven.
Go ahead. This one for 139?
Yes. Anybody? Dick, did you want to make it?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, and we'll fight about it. I move the city council approve Amendment number eleven in the amount of $139,000 to contract number seven, seven dash twenty-five, City of Ketchikan, Berth One and Two Rehab, Master Plan Between the City and PND Engineers, etc. Incorporated Authorized Funding for Berth One and Two Replacement Capital Account, Direct the City Manager to execute the amendment on behalf of the city council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and second. Dick?
Okay. So this is for the design of Phase Four, which is the uplands part of the Berth. I guess my question is, why can't we have the uplands part done by somebody besides PND?
Not upstate.
Porton Harbor's Director Steve Corpron, if you want to put an RFP out, we could go that route as well. Phase Four is going to be covered shelter down at the base of Berth One. We're envisioning replacing the expansion joints down between Spruce Mill Way and Berth One. We're asking them to redesign some kind of a, the exhaust housing, or the exhaust intake housing for the pump station down there. Replace, it's the thing that's kind of in between the welcome arch and the statues now. We'd like to just make that a little newer, maybe a little less smaller footprint. Some more of the bus stops, probably one for the bus stop that we put in Phase One last year here, canopy bus stop there. The difference being, like, as we mentioned in the canopy ones earlier, designing the canopy isn't that big a deal, but doing the structural design work to get down through the dock and get the things connected to the dock to withstand the 120 mile through three-second gust design loads. I don't know, the last time we went out for RFPs, I'll give you an example, R&amp;M, they don't have an ocean engineer, so their team member they picked was from Washington State. Here, the team that's being proposed, the architect would be Steven Peters, local, but the structural design people would be PND from down south.
Are we already paying for that in the previous agenda, either?
No, that's the different canopy.
Yeah, the covered walkway canopy, it'd be the same cap. It's going to be the same thing. Mark my words, you won't be able to tell the difference. You look underneath the dock, it'll be the same stuff.
That's where some of the savings is in some of these contracts with them. When they're up here, they can work on two or three contracts at once, and you only pay them for the travel once.
Okay. Anybody else? Bob?
Well, I guess my question is, is there competent engineering in town to tackle some of this? And, you know, it's $139,000. It's not a large portion of the project. And I'd like to have the opportunity for some local contractors to work on these things and get some of that marine experience, even if they have to hire outside people. I don't know, do you need a marine engineer necessarily to attach it to their dock?
I don't know. The last time we went out for an RFP for Porton Harbor work, let's say, just as an example, R&amp;M's proposal had an ocean engineer from down south. It was the person that they would rely on for that part of the project.
Probably a different type of work, though. I don't know. Just speculating.
Well, I don't have a problem with looking at others, but I mean, you know, PND does a lot of work for us. But before PND, it was somebody else. And years back, we got tired of them, so we went out and we got PND. And then we got tired of PND, and we went out and got another outfit. And one thing I've all learned from all of them, they're all the same. They all cost the same. And we found out there was no difference. So if you guys want to try to do it local, that's fine. I don't have a problem with it. But I know we get a lot of PND, but, I mean, I've been here since 87, and we've gone back and forth between them and another outfit out of June, if I remember right. There's KPFF. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think Terratech's in. Yeah. Okay, Bob?
I don't have any problem with the work that PND is doing, and I think that it's appropriate to use them where we're in these more critical marine design work. But I don't think that this is part of that. I think this is upland stuff that's a little bit more in the realm of what we can do in town. And I'd just like to spread that work around is all it is. Nothing against PND. I think they're a good outfit. Thank you.
Well, let's vote. Have you guys talked? Let's vote on this. We vote it down, then we'll request the management to go out for an RFP, if that's the direction of the council. Matt, then Dick.
Well, I just wanted to make the comment. As this comes back...
Go ahead. You're good. You started. Go ahead, Dick.
Okay. Before these guys do any design work, I want to see a conceptual design. Because this is uplands on top. And I think we need to take a hard look at where canopies are, where those kinds of things are placed, and see how they fit with everything going on.
That was, that's part of it, was the public meetings to get going on all this ideas and conceptualists.
This is more important than the stuff to play and lay in concrete, so we'll do it.
Matt?
As you say, normally, I agree with bringing the business local, but lately, every time we do a delay, we cost ourselves 10 to 20% for each time we delay. So I think we just need to move forward.
Okay, let's call a roll.
Seivertson?
No.
Olson?
Yes.
Harris?
I'm going to have to say no.
West?
Yes.
That fills five to two.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd move to have a direct city manager to put an RFP out for this particular part of the work.
Moved and second, and I think we all know what direction. Call a roll.
Harris?
Aye.
Kuz?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing. That brings us down to item eight, contract zero seven twenty-five, Amendment twelve, City of Ketchikan, Berth One and Two Rehabilitation, Master Planning Study, PND, Inc. Sounds familiar. And seven, eight? Seven, eight? Seven. Seven, eight, eight?
Seven.
Yes.
Your Honor, I move the city council approve Amendment number twelve in the amount of $596,000 to contract number seven dash twenty-five, City of Ketchikan, Berth One and Two Rehabilitation, Master Plan Study between the city and PND Engineering, Inc. Authorized Funding from the Berth One Two Replacement Capital Account, and direct the city manager to execute the amendment on behalf of the city council.
Who didn't second it? Bob?
Nothing, Your Honor. I think this is just moving on. We asked for a master plan, and I think this is moving on to the next step.
Anybody else? Dick?
I need Steve to explain to me what they're going to do in this next phase.
Porton Harbor's Director Steve Corpron, this is the construction administration and inspection for Phase Three of the contract. So this is an onsite engineer the whole time they're on the job. This is all the vibration monitoring. This is especially important in this one, because we're going to be driving piles within about two feet of the buildings along Front Street Extension. We're also going to do a pre and post-construction survey of those buildings as well, so that nobody can come back later and say that we caused cracks to their building.
Call a roll.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Harris?
Aye.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
All right. That brings us down to seven, eight, ten, Resolution thirteen twenty-five oh eight, levying a general tax for the municipal purposes of unreal and business personal property in the city for 2013.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I don't want to offer this one yet. I was remiss in the beginning. I was hoping we could switch eleven and ten, because I feel the discussion on eleven might lead to, or the outcome of eleven might lead to a change in that protocol, too.
If the council has no objection, we can switch those around. Okay, then we're on. Item eleven, Order thirteen seventeen twenty-six, is issued with issuance of general obligation bonds to finance a portion of the cost of capital improvements at Ketchikan Medical Center, providing for submission to the city voters at the city election at the Hill August first, October first, first reading.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Move the city council approve and reading ordinance number thirteen seventeen twenty-six, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bond in the amount not to exceed 43 million to finance a portion of the cost of capital improvements at the Ketchikan Medical Center, providing for submission to the city voters at the city election to be held on October first, 2013, of a proposition approving this project, approving this ordinance, and ratifying the authorization of the general obligation bond and establishing an effective date.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Bob?
Well, as we all know, we asked for 20, we got 15, leaves us five short, being at the project's $58 million. We have to make up this difference someplace. We still have another round of legislative options that we can pursue to try to pick up some more of those monies. But again, by obligating ourselves to the next $5 million, it also raises our bond payment. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yep. So I think we're far enough down the road on this project. We've got to continue to move forward. From my understanding, this doesn't, at this point, change the amount of the hospital, the hospital sales tax that we have now will cover that.
Based on the assumptions we're using, that's correct.
Okay. Dick, and then Matt.
Okay, now, I think what Bob said, that the hospital sales tax will cover 43.
Under the set of assumptions that Mr. Newell put in his financial projection, that's correct.
Because I'm really concerned about raising this by 5 million. And I think we will have an opportunity next session legislative to get some more. But same time, if there's any way to reduce this cost, that hospital and upbuilding, I think we also need to look at that with the designers. Because we've got to minimize how much we go over and above what we're committing to. So we need to move forward with this. And I think, let's see, this is for the bond, for the people out in the public to work with, and they need to clearly understand in the bond word, in the ordinance wording that goes on the ballot, where the money's coming from, it's sales tax.
Great. Matt and Bob?
Yeah, this project originally started out, when I got on the council, at 76. It's over 80 now. I was very concerned when we went to the legislature with our packet and already listed ourselves at 38 million just for this first phase, to push it to 58. I've been very adamant that I was not willing to go over 38 million. And we're already just in doing the first part of this, well, it's the most expensive part, pushing ourselves to 43. Bob, I have a tax question here. When we look at the assumptions, the 43 million, is that saying that we're going to utilize all hospital sales tax to pay for that? Or is that still allowing us to use the $400,000 for general government?
The answer is no. We're not going to use all of the hospital sales tax for the debt service. If you look at the very, very last page of this agenda item, there's a 10-year projection. And that projection shows the other expenses we plan on paying from the hospital sales tax fund in addition to the debt service. And assuming that our assumptions are correct, we should have sufficient funds to make the debt service payment from the hospital sales tax fund. But again, I just want to caution to the council that, you know, sales tax revenues do tend to fluctuate. And when we had the setback in 2008, 2009, our sales tax revenues dropped a million dollars over a two-year period. So it can happen.
And as we, as we look at this, we're already putting ourselves at 43 million. Just to get the first $58 million portion of the project done, how are we going to, how are we proposing we pay for the next 18 million? Because the original design was that that would be paid for by other people, or other agencies, and not by us.
Yeah. In our original plan, and we have made this... Yeah, uh, in our original plan, and we have made this very clear to the state, that we're putting up fifty percent of the project upfront, and we're looking for them to take over the next phases of that hundred percent. That that's the intent, is that correct?
That's the intent, I'm not gonna.
Well, we're not gonna say it's gonna happen, but that is definitely the intent.
Well, my thing is, we can get the first phase done, I'm not worried about the second phase. Um, if it comes around, great, then I wanna get this uh, first part done, so. My concern is, you know, especially with what we have in here from from our, you know, from Ray, from our, from our lobbyist, and I understand the projections, but looking forward, I'm I'm having a hard time seeing where we're gonna come up with that additional twenty, what is it, you know, twenty-three million? And it's, odds are the state's not gonna kick in for it. We, and just in building the library, we got lucky with the state. We had other agencies that we were counting on that did not kick into the level that we were expecting. And so I I have some major concerns in the future. This is a much-needed project, but I definitely can see this hurting, and thank you for showing me that I missed the number here. But I can see this hurting us in the long run, and I'm a little weary. I'll have a last word.
Yeah, um, like you said, there's another round coming, just in election year, uh, I think this year, uh, legislature, we had a lot of new people in it, and I felt very, very fortunate that we got the fifteen. Uh, I think that we may have um, another shot at next year to, and I I I would, you know, basically say, let's focus, uh, let's stay focused on the phases as we go. We got the first phase, pending to do the next phase, but we'll deal with that as it comes up. We need to get this first phase done to keep the hospital in um, efficient and be able to track physicians. We we can't do that now, we can't retain.
Dick, I mean, KJ?
Yeah, I just checked. And I I could be wrong, but at one time when we uh, bonded like for the fire department and for the uh, library up there, we had voters come back to us and tell us, well, we thought we had the money, we weren't borrowing the money, it was just no big deal, you guys, you know. I don't really think it's gonna be important if we're gonna bond for forty-three million dollars, that we let our voters know, hey, that's a loan. We have to pay that loan back, you guys aren't getting it for free. Don't come back and tell us, oh, gosh, we thought you guys already had that took care of. Because we took a hell of a beating on that, too.
We will make sure.
Yeah, I just.
Uh, yeah, the difference was in that, in in those bonds, we didn't have a mechanism in place. We didn't have a tax base already in existence to pay for that. Presently, we're working within the confines of the, the present hospital, I think.
That that's correct, but for the purposes of of full disclosure, okay?
If the rates go up, I know.
If the rates go up, or if uh, sales tax doesn't hold, we're pledging the full faith and credit of the city. It's a general obligation bond, so. We got plenty of um, state head tax funding that.
CPV money.
But since we go down to the, with the dock with our ambulance monster, um, but that's another issue. Um, call the roll, please.
Severson?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Kuss?
Yes.
Harris?
Man. I gotta say no.
Olson?
No.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Okay, that passes four to three. And that brings us to, back to ten, resolution thirteen twenty-five oh eight, levying a general tax for municipal purposes upon all real and business personal property in the city for two thousand thirteen.
Your honor?
Go ahead.
Move the city council through resolution number thirteen dash twenty-five oh eight, levying the general tax for municipal purposes upon all real and business uh, personal property in the city for the year two thousand and thirteen, providing the collection of taxes due in two thousand and thirteen, prescribing penalties and interest in these liquid taxes, and establishing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Boot in second. Bob?
Yes, your honor, um, and again, I think Matt had kinda alluded to this. If you go down into the resolution a little bit, uh, and and look at the recitals, it talks about utilizing this particular, I mean, we we talked about the level of sales tax, and I don't wanna reduce it, understanding that um, we're going out for forty-three million dollars worth of bonds for the hospital, and the two hundred and uh, I think, what is it, uh, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred twenty-two dollars will reduce the um, amount transferred from the uh, hospital sales tax, the general.
I agree. Anybody else? Matt and Dick?
First thing, I just wanna point out that the business personal property tax um, outcome that we saw out of this was an increase of eighteen million, up up from forty-two to sixty. And that was as the borough assessor had described to us what he thought would happen after we um, followed his lead and the borough's lead and removed the first, I can't remember if it's twenty-five thousand. And so I I'm glad that that worked out the way it did, and I I really appreciate his guidance in that, and and working with the borough to do that. You know, that said, we're hearing all the time how we can't increase taxes too much, and I'm really worried about this hospital thing. So, I'm, I was not gonna vote for this, but now that we have the hospital tax going forward, I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna make sure that everything's paid for.
Dick?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to clarify what's in the wording here. At budget time, did we tentatively approve a mill rate of six point four, or a mill rate of six point seven?
Six point seven.
That was what we based at the budget.
We based it in.
Okay, call the roll. Oh, Marty?
Uh, no, what is this, what is the number that we're, we're sliding on?
Six point seven.
It is, okay, thank you.
Call the roll.
Kuss?
Yes.
Bergeron?
No.
West?
Yes.
Harris?
Okay.
Severson?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Carlson?
Okay, that passes four to three. That brings us to number seven, contract held fifty agreement for professional services for Peace Health Medical Center project management. Uh, this is the project management cost, I mean, contract for the project, Dow MKPM, or HKM.
What item was that?
Number twelve, not seven.
Sorry.
Your honor?
Go ahead.
Move the city council through contract number twelve dash fifty agreement for professional services for Peace Health Catchcan Medical Center project management between the city and Dow HKM of Anchorage, Alaska, in an amount not to exceed two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. authorized funding from the two thousand thirteen Public Health Division's Catchcan Medical Center project management capital account and direct the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city council.
Second. Boot in second. Do you wanna add anything?
I think it's self-explanatory, and we need to keep it moving. Call the roll.
Oh, your honor?
Go ahead.
Uh, after the fact, I guess, um, uh, I think that it would be prudent for us to appoint a couple of council members, uh, as we move forward in the uh, in the design, what kind of thing.
On the hospital?
Yes.
Carl, um, is that, um, we've done that before, you'll set it up and everything?
Tell me who and.
Yep. Who, um, think about who wants to be interested in, and um, let um, me know by next meeting.
Can I do it?
No.
Alright.
Can I do it?
Yeah.
Check him.
Okay, we got Sam, Matt, and Bob. Sam, Matt, and Bob.
Go ahead, Matt.
Arm wrestle.
We can do it.
Okay, then we got Matt and Bob. All right, if there's anybody else, let me know. Yeah, that brings us down to item number.
Call the roll.
You got a better.
Oh, yeah, call the roll, please, yeah.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
West?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Severson?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to nothing. That brings us down to Fire and EMS Dispatch Services from North and South Angus Services.
Your honor?
Management wants some direction. Bob?
Can we move the true-up agreement? I see Mr. Uh,
Is he still here?
He's still waiting for that.
Oh, I thought he was gone.
Can we move that up?
Um, hold off on thirteen, let's bring down to um,
Seven B one.
Seven B one draft Whitman Lake Hydro Project True-Up Agreement. Do you have a motion?
Your honor?
Go ahead.
I move the city council director and all managers to negotiate a Whitman Lake Hydro Electric Pro- Project True-Up Agreement with Southeast Alaska Power Agency SEPA, incorporating such terms and conditions as detailed in the staff's report dated May twentieth, two thousand thirteen, and as met, and and may be modified by the city council.
Second, please. Boot in second. Uh, Bob?
Yeah, I think we need to move forward on uh, the the true-up agreement. We've talked about this since two thousand and eleven. This is the first draft that SEPA has sent over. Um, I had uh, discussions with the manager. We talked about um, sending them back a laundry list and figuring out a time when uh, the utility manager and uh, finance director can sit down and start moving through the items. And on that note, I would also like to um, add that we, uh, on a parallel path, uh, work uh, on the conditions of what was proposed maybe through the RFO, or or for the sale of the Whitman project to SEPA and try to start uh, working out an agreement. That would take away any need for a true-up agreement and uh, may have uh, benefits overall.
Trey, can you come on up?
Is that a motion, Bob?
That's a motion.
That's a second for me, then.
Oh, okay.
It's getting late.
Oh, yeah, I agree. I only have one question for Trey. Um, have we looked at, um, has Wolf, Eric looked at a way we could operate Whitman that wouldn't have a power, I mean, effect on SEPA um, power? Is there, I know Eric has all kinds of different um, scenarios and um, way he operates the dams and everything. Have he, has he looked at any kind of um, proposal that could possibly work? I don't know, maybe the, they all are full at the same time, I don't know.
Yeah, I I think that there's, there's gonna be, there's likely that there'll be some type of a true-up associated, but I think in a lot of years, it may be very small, um, and in the future, it'll eventually go away.
But has he looked at um, how to operate, I mean, how we could operate Whitman where it wouldn't have an effect on a major effect on SEPA, where we'd have a big true-up payment? Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Um, I I think that'll probably come out in the discussions as we get into the true-up agreement, and we look at each different scenario that there's concerns about.
I I just, I didn't know if anybody's really looked at, I, 'cause I don't know what the impact is for sure, what Whitman's gonna be, so I'd like to make sure we're all looking at how we can run it most efficiently, where we're not um, uh, having a big true-up. Make it the lowest possible, and I agree with Bob looking at possibly having SEPA um, buy the project, and then we we might have to worry about it, but, um, Dick then Sam. And stay there for case.
Uh, I I guess, just to comment, is I I think that this true-up agreement is very important to both the city, SEPA, and the other two communities that are involved in SEPA, and that in the long run, it's gonna set, I think, some, I don't wanna say precedence, but some give us some guidelines on as we raise Swan Lake, and we deal with Taiyi, figure out how all that water becomes available to everybody, from making electricity at basically the rate that we've got now or less. And uh, so it's important that we work, I think, very cooperatively together, and and uh, and in a positive manner, because I, uh, there's some, some comments in this memo here that to me are negative and and tend to make you not wanna work together, but I want the two of you to work together because it's important to us on a very cooperative relation, so that so that we get something positive out of it in the long run, but I think we can do that, and it's gonna be good for us when we're done.
Anybody else? Sam?
Yeah, I got some few perp's flight questions, Trey. Um, one of them is, is uh, the call for power. This is top secret, so I'll face this. So if the city throws this one in into the call for power, and that's somehow incorporated in the call for power, wouldn't that make a true-up agreement redundant?
Uh, potentially, it'd be two different deals, um, depending on the utilization and what option uh, the offer came under, under the RFO.
Okay, um, you know, and I was chatting with you briefly earlier, you know, the one thing that's really kind of frustrating for me is how incredibly complex all of this stuff is, and how, what an important issue this really is. What we're talking about here is um, we're, we're, SEPA says that if when we're operating these things, there are times when we are displacing SEPA power. And so we are going to pay them, I think, six point eight cents a kilowatt hour for the power that we produce and use to offset their lost revenues. And so this agreement, however it's structured, is hugely important, long-term, for the financial viability of this project. And there's a myriad of implications that are complex and hard to fathom at ten o'clock at night. And so I think that, you know, in the, in the interest of everyone, we should probably have a standalone meeting, explain what the true-up agreement is, what those consequences are, and carefully what SEPA's perspective is and what ours is, and see it, you know, and see if this, all this stuff makes sense, because I think in order for us to vote on this, it's a huge financial implication, and we need to have an understanding with all of us, whether you're on the SEPA board or not. So I would hope that we would approve the motion, they go back and 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 do the negotiations, but at the same time, that we bone up on this and actually understand what it is that we're doing. And so we have an understanding going down the road, so we don't have friction down the road. And when we're all understanding what we're doing and we're in agreement with it, we don't have a problem with each other. I think a lot of this stuff comes from that. And I'd like to echo Mr. Kuss's comments about working cooperatively and getting this thing done, and I am sincere in that, in wanting to do that. Getting this, you know, getting this whole thing so it functions right.
Yeah, the.
The interesting part about this is, this isn't just Catchcan, and this, I mean, we have to, we have to deal with Wrangling Petersburg on the same. No, we have to sell this to them because it has to go back to the, the board for a vote. I I'm, I'm not so sure that we shouldn't be involving a member of Thomas Day um, within this discussion as we go through it, so they have all the information that the two bodies will at the time they do that. That's something that can be discussed down the line. But this is a foundation document, and yet we want the best deal for the city. Um, and so there's, there are restraints with the power sales agreement and other things that are in there. Um, but if we don't sit down at the table and at least start talking about it, we're not gonna move forward.
Absolutely. If I can just make one other point, your honor, and I know it's a long meeting. Um, at the, I don't know if it was at the last SEPA meeting or what, but we were talking about, you know, a very good project, which is low-lying freedom on the, on, on the hydro side, which is raising Swan Lake. Terrific idea of project. We've gotta do this project. And then our brothers from Petersburg jump up and say, well, if we raise it twelve feet, well, whose water is it? And so at that point, you know, the alarms go off. This is an incredibly complex issue. And you know, so we all kinda need to start paying attention to what's going on here and have an understanding of what this whole thing is, and have reasonable answers to questions like that. And uh, you know, for, you know, and and then even if you're looking at the methodology from SEPA's standpoint, and and the advanced mathematics on, you know, how they, how they came about to all this stuff, it's complicated. And and we need uh, an expert's guidance to, for, for the understanding of what this truly is, and so I hope we take the time to actually do that.
Matt?
If I may.
Hold on, is that letting Matt then Trey? Thanks for staying.
I have a problem with us paying money, and because we've displaced sales when we're getting more than that back, in terms of rebate. So uh, I have an issue with that. It shows that SEPA is more than, than financially stable, and are, are making more than enough money than you need to make at this point in time.
Okay, Trey, in case you had another question.
Uh, I wasn't sure I understood uh, Matt's uh, point there, but um, I did wanna add, you know, SEPA's um, been proactive in approaching the city in a positive manner regarding this issue. Um, my last transmittal to the city, when I forwarded the true-up draft, and the one previous to that, where I offered to get together and talk about these issues so we could start kind of working through them. Um, the last time I sent it to them, I sent it to four people, including Carl, and it was never even acknowledged that I sent it to you. Um, so this is a two-way road, if we have a good relationship. You know, I do something positive, I get negative feedback from you guys.
Well, um, I understand, I mean, I deal with um, you know. Well, I understand, I mean, I deal with, you know, with the city, the borough. I mean, if we put Carl and Dan Barkhorst and you in a room and Andy and Eric in a side room and lit it on fire, I guarantee you guys will all be dead because somebody will work together, get out. I really, I mean, I respect all of you guys. You guys are very smart and intelligent and I know you could, come on. I'm frustrated. And I want you guys all to work together, and the council does, and you guys make big bucks, more than I'll ever dream of, so, and we're all public officials, and so I want everybody to not get unheard, and that means everybody, not just the city management, everybody. I just want us all to work together and come up. It's a true-up agreement, we'll work on it and try to do our best. The SEPA board represents all of our communities and we'll all work together and can come up with something where we're not jabbing at each other. I mean, I've seen plenty of jabs between all the different managements and their emotions. I, let's just work together. And I agree with you wholeheartedly, Trey, we want all to work together. It's for the best for all of us, and I think we can all work toget, do it and just no more jabs. I don't wanna see anybody's, I mean, from last February's jabs between the borough and the city on issues, we haven't even talked about he and that show, so. I think we're all on board on that and we're all adults and professionals and we want to move forward.
Sir, can I have one other comment there?
You may.
Perhaps it may be of benefit to the city to consider bringing in a hydro water management specialist. I know you guys have a lot of smart people on your staff, but there are people that are professional experts at hydro water management. And I think it would add some technical expertise to the discussion with regard to the true-up agreement. SEPA uses a hydro water management special to vet some of our planning, and this guy's one of the best in this hemisphere, so.
We'll take that into consideration.
Something for you to consider, it would help the discussion, I think.
Thank you very much. Thanks for standing by. All right, let's call a roll.
Burgeon.
Aye.
Seivertson.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Kuss.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to nothing. All right, now we go back to fire and EMS. Number 13, please.
I move that we have one fire and EMS for the entire island.
Anybody got a motion here?
Your Honor, I move the city council to direct the city manager to take such action regarding the North and South Tonga service areas paying for fire and EMS dispatch services as determined appropriate by the city council.
Seconded. Moving seconded. Carl, oh Marty, you can throw your question.
No, I'm interested in.
Carl, I guess you wanted direction, and I saw what the borough presented. I think it needs to be a little higher, but I don't think it's gonna, it needs to be as high as what we're asking for. You know, I'm not, I mean, getting anything from them to start helping on that is all I'm after. I just don't think the five and five plus 10 is it. I'd like to see the bases a little higher. Anybody else? Bob and Dick.
You know, at the last cooperative relations meeting, we talked about this a little bit. The borough had said they've been in discussions with Anchorage to maybe provide them with EMS services. I think we should continue along that to see how much that's gonna cost them. So then we would know what ballpark we're in.
Good idea.
You know, if they're, I mean, I don't know what it costs to provide that service to them. And they may give us an indication.
I mean, Dick then.
Or maybe we should do it.
Yeah, that's why I was just gonna say, Carl.
Judging from what I understood went on at the last meeting and the borough is looking at someone else providing that service, which I think would be wrong if it left the town, but we need to work together cooperatively. I'm with you, Lou, I think what they propose is a little low, what we, what we propose is quite a bit high. And, but that being said, I think we need to see what Dan comes up with. If it's really good, then maybe we need to do the same thing because I think our services cost us way too much. And I guess this is being negative, but if the two managers can't agree, I'd suggest that about two of us and two of the borough assemblies sit down and I think we'll come up with a figure.
Figuring, yes.
I think this is just getting ridiculous. I mean, I think it's getting out of hand and we're talking about sending services to another community. I mean, we all talk about not wanting to have other contractors coming in and doing work because it takes money out of our, you know, economic base. This is just another example of that. I have been part of that cooperative relations committee and I just have to say that I feel like when we go into that meeting and manager Pam along, I still feel like there's an animosity component to it. Because when you come into the meeting and you say, if they can find services somewhere else, more power to them. I don't, I understand your frustration, but I don't feel like that helps the discussion along. And everyone's just drawing the line in sand on each side and it's ridiculous. This has been going on for way too long. We need to find a resolution and I think maybe Dick has a point there. I mean, I would really like to hear, you know, more from the fire chiefs of the different entities. And from what I understand, and I don't have the background in this like you do, but the numbers have changed so drastically from 2010 to now, and I understand, you explained last time that things had changed within the dispatch component of things. But I think at some point we really do need to identify what is just truly expenses for fire dispatch and then move on. You know, we can agree, get something in agreement, it doesn't have to be set in stone. We can try it out for a year and then reevaluate it, but doing nothing and just arguing about it isn't productive for either any of us.
I think Bob has a good idea, but we should have Carl check into what another outfit would do to provide the service. Might give us an idea what it's worth. But otherwise, I'm not interested in.
We can always contract it out to India or something, you know?
I'm just looking at costs. We're not gonna contract it out, we're just working in the process of getting a dollar amount and we're giving direction to our management. Dick?
Yeah, I guess as we move forward with this thing, at one time I think we had a list of where all the phone calls went to that came in, like so many for fires, so many for police, so many for North Tonga, so many. I haven't seen that for a while and I need that to help me understand where it's at. And then the other thing is, it still doesn't bother me if we raise, if we have to vote on it, that I guess I have to put another dollar on my phone bill to pay for this silly thing anyway. I mean, that ain't gonna get all of it, but it's gonna help and we, the users, are the ones that are demanding the service, I guess, or else we're forcing it down somebody's throat.
Go ahead, Sam.
Like I said, my original motion, this is the best argument there is for area-wide fire and EMS. I mean, it's ridiculous that a town of our size would have, what do we have, five fire stations? I mean, I've lost count. And how many chiefs do we have? And then, you know, there's, that's not a good thing because in a town in our size, I mean, you have all these moving parts, it should be simpler. But I would really like us to hopefully take issues like this as an impetus to look at area-wide fire and EMS. And I know that the fire professionals and everybody think that this is a good idea and hopefully this will segue into that.
Well, we're not going to, I mean, the city's not gonna stop doing the service. We're going to continue working on getting a price. We're too small a town to throw up our hands and not do the job for it, so let's just continue working, have Carl work with them on trying to get a price. If it takes us a long time, we're not gonna stop the service that we're providing. And I just don't wanna make it a bigger issue than it is.
Yeah, and where I agree with you, there is a cost for providing that service and there should be something paid and we just haven't agreed on that amount. And it may not be all based on pro-call because just the fact that you have that system and you need it, and hopefully you never do, is a cost.
It's always gotta be there, too. It's gotta be super reliable.
And actually, I talked to retired chief Ho and he says that our E911 service here is the best it has ever been.
Let's call a roll.
Just to clarify the direction?
Yes.
What's the direction?
Do you have direction?
You got enough direction, Carl?
I have lots of direction.
All right, cancel the roll call. That moves us down to eight vouchers. Catcha Can Daily News, 7,100. Hallelujah.
Your Honor, I approve for, move for approval of vouchers to the Catcha Can Daily News amount of $7,134.
Second. Moving second, I'll roll.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Burgeon?
Aye.
Harris?
Sure.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Hey, that's approved. That brings us down to manager report.
I have a number, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Couple meetings ago, I brought you a request by the borough to have a presentation by the borough assessor. That looks like it will now be taking place at your meeting of July 8th.
Sounds good.
You have a report in your packet today relative to the pending retirement of the building official, Mr. Durden. Unless directed otherwise, I'm gonna move forward, starting a recruitment for that position. I assume it's gonna take some time to fill. At the last Cooperative Relations Committee meeting, Tom Ferry addressed the committee relative to a number of issues in Newtown. There was some discussion as to where the harp was. That's in the hands of the borough attorney right now. We're waiting a response from him so the city attorney can finalize an agreement and that will be forthcoming. At the same time, there was some discussion about Hopkins Alley. I did discuss that matter with the engineering division staff. That design, two-year project, was assigned to Mr. Brockie. Since Mr. Brockie now is filling in for Ms. Jurzak, it looks like that's one of the projects that's gonna be impacted. Steve, you here? Come up. We have some sequestration news to share with you this evening.
Steve Copeland, Port Harbors Director, just very quickly, we found out last night and we got some clarification today. I guess the local customs office here, their published hours are six to six, which we didn't really realize because during this time of year, we have a lot of boats coming in in the evenings, you know, larger yachts and that. They've always had somebody come out and meet them, but as of last night until the end of the fiscal, federal fiscal year, at the end of September, they're gonna be pulling back to those six to six hours. So those boats coming in will not get a customs call until after eight the next morning. So it affects our operations a little bit in that, especially the larger ones, we usually would let them kinda touch and go down at the berth three or berth four tender float or daily float or even riot's float, knowing that they, they'd only be there a little while, but we cannot let them stay there till after eight the next morning. Especially this year, we're full just about every day with cruise ships. So we're gonna be turning some people away that are probably gonna have to anchor out or make other arrangements because they can't get off the boat until they clear customs. So, well, they, they still can't get off the boat, though, until after eight the next morning. Anyway, it just, it was something that came up and Carl wanted me to share it with you tonight in case people had questions about anything that, if, anything we were doing wrong or doing different, and we aren't. They, they are still gonna have a 24-hour staff on the phone, so when people come in and they call the customs number after 6 o'clock, the person will answer and say, yeah, we'll schedule be down there, you know, 8 o'clock tomorrow morning.
Some of my super rich friends are just gonna have to wait to see me.
Sorry.
Do we need to write a letter to the delegation complaining? It may not do any good, but we oughta write a letter. I mean, sequestration's turned into a joke because it's painful, not where it should be if it's making pain.
Okay, Carl?
Couple more, Mr. Mayor. You have a special meeting a week from tonight, correct your result, just remind the council of that. I had this conversation with Councilman Seivertson and I'm just, I'm not gonna dwell on it. The council has given some pretty clear direction tonight, how you want to approach these discussions of working with other municipalities or other entities. I get what you're telling me. But you're also a council who doesn't wanna raise taxes, you don't wanna raise rates. You've made that abundantly clear in the past as well. So you're gonna have a budget coming your way pretty soon and you're not gonna have the kinds of things I've been pursuing as, as means to try to offset some of the challenges you're gonna be, you're gonna be confronted with. And I wish you well in that endeavor.
I understand you're trying to help us, Carl. All right, yes.
Couple of questions. One, Carl, what did you mean by the, in the cooperative relations committee meeting, heart of Newtown? I didn't quite get it. Is there, what's the issue?
Harp, Hopkins, Hopkins Alley.
Valley, okay, okay.
I know, I thought you said harp, too. And I remember Dick, I go, Dick, what the hell's harp?
The other question I've got is looking at the reports from, I guess, the maintenance of the building here, how many windows in the front are we replacing? And I'm looking at, you know, the windows in the clerk's office up there, they look plum good to me, but are we replacing them?
They're gonna have to be popped out and then they're gonna be put back in. Some windows will be replaced.
So they're gonna have to be put, so, okay, okay.
But I will tell you, one of the things, and I don't have any financial impact for you tonight, as they started to abate the paint, the exterior paint, we anticipated lead. There are now areas that have asbestos, so.
I just heard that, it's fine.
There's gonna be cha-ching, cha-ching on that.
Is there anything that's radioactive under there, Carl?
They'll find it.
I was a shelter at one time, good meeting. All right, any other questions before we move on? Executive session. City clerk's file.
Just a reminder, or to let the council know that the packet for next week's meeting has been uploaded to Box so you can take a look at it.
Thank you. City attorney's file. Future agenda items. Mayor and city councilmen are comments. Dick?
It's time to get forward.
Sam?
None, Your Honor.
Deanne? Matt?
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you to Carl and the staff at the Civic Center. We had lemonade day, it was a great success. I just saw another note from Mary Qualchuk about from Rotary to the city and we had a lemonade day stand up there and I know Civic Center staff were instrumental in their success, so they went above and beyond helping three, three students and a couple of parents sell lemonade that day. And also, I just wanna reiterate what Carl said, and I probably should've spoken more, but I, during the borough discussion, I'm concerned about us continually saying it's okay and we are gonna be bit by it. Carl's absolutely right.
Bob?
We were welcomed on the solstice. The borough mayor presented a plaque. We had a tour of the boat and lunch aboard. One of the questions that came up was, how much fuel does this thing burn? And it burns a gallon a second. So the cost of a million dollars in fuel to make the seven-day round trip. I also had the opportunity to take a six-page class through the shipyard. The Alaska, the Arctic Prowler is being built in there. It's really cool looking ships. The shipyard tour was very accommodating for 49, 49 six-year-olds, or sixth graders, so it was, it was good.
Marty? KJ?
Nothing I can say out loud.
Well, I think I wrote a letter to a senate committee for this cruise ship industry on this, before asking you. All it did was talk about how tourism, how cruise ship industry and everything is important to our community. I guess that's over the fuel thing going on back east. Mayor Wellington from Mellicatla would like me to write a letter in support to the state. I guess the, they're going to switch to their new terminal and the ferry is cutting back some hours. They're hoping I could write a letter saying that having them over here to help our economy is important, so if you have no objections, I'll do something like that. He's gonna send me some information on the schedule and everything that's coming up. I thank you guys for the vote on the hospital. I hope the three who vote against it will get more confidence in the project. I have full confidence in this and we can make it happen. We've gone through a lot of projects and... We've gone through a lot of projects and this is going to be a good one and it's going to be one that we'll all be proud of. Friday, I meet with the USDA, Keith Perkins from SIC is also going to be over here. And Wednesday, Tuesday, there's a change of command at the Coast Guard Base in a month to come. And Wednesday, I think I give a plaque to a cruise ship. That's all I have. I think we have one more item, or no, other new business. Executive sessions, we have item B.
Your Honor. Oh, no, do we have B?
B one.
Yeah, B one, yeah.
Your Honor, I move the city council to carry that consistent with the general manager's memorandum dated May twenty-four, two thousand thirteen, it is in the best interest of the city going to executive session in accordance with the KMC two-point-zero-four-point-zero-two-five A three and AS four-four-point-six-two-point-three-one-zero-C three to discuss tax litigation strategies with legal counsel within the client's privilege related to the failure of Southeast Engineering Inc. to complete contract number zero-seven-dash-three-eight U V dissection and port formation facility in accordance to what the terms and conditions of the contract.
Move and second it, call the roll.
Burjran?
I am.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
West?
Yes.